Elevator hold music. Or jeopardy music, either way.
Welcome, everyone, to the October 27th study session of the Prior Lake Savage Board of Education. Before we go to the public forum, Director Atkinson, can you hear me? Oh, we can't hear you. Oh, we have no, no Lisa on.
Now we should be going.
No.
We had that before.
No. Can you hear?
We can hear.
This has to be open order for them to hear.
Marcus told us to shut it. We just called him.
Did you can't see her?
So see, now you can, right?
It was working earlier.
Can you see her now?
Yes.
But we can't hear her.
Lisa, can you?
Can you hear me? No, now we can't hear.
The sound is coming through this. Oh, that's frustrating.
Okay, so I'll just open it just a tad. Is she still there?
Yep.
Now talk.
Hello, hello?
We're good.
We'll just deal with that.
Can't see her now? There, Lucy.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah. Li- li- So it looks like, Lisa, we may be able to hear you and not see you, so feel free to pipe in.
I am totally fine if you can't see me. That's absolutely my question.
Yeah.
My camera's on.
And maybe I'll project to the, that TV.
Because Marcus told us to shut the laptop, the lid, and then it projects, then.
One second, Lisa.
Hello, come here.
Which would you rather?
It's a study session, so I don't know if we-
Sorry, there's something-
It's a study session. Do we have to have them? We used to never even videotape these. I don't think this is-
I think it's fine.
I think legally you have to have me on. Thank you very much, Director France.
No, I'm, this is a study session, I think.
So I'm wondering if, if we have you by voice, if that's enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine to me. I don't care if I'm on camera. I can see you guys.
Can we put this around so they can see you?
Yes, school board meetings, we have to have them on video, but study sessions, we don't.
You can see her now.
We can see you on the-
The laptop, so I should be able to- If you can get to stay there, we can start.
Okay.
All right, I can see you and I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So before we get to the public forum, Director Atkinson has a statement she would like to read.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Director White. I just wanted to take a moment to clarify for our community that the work that I'm doing in support of Title IX is a project that I'm working on as an individual board member. I apologize if there's any confusion surrounding this topic coming out of our last board meeting as a result of the updated share during my board report. If anyone has any questions or concerns surrounding the Title IX project, please feel free to reach out to me, no problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have two speakers.
Point of order.
Yes.
I, this was not a public agenda item. So I would like permission to comment.
Go ahead.
But I think that has to come from you because it's not an agenda item.
Yes, you may comment if you want.
Great. There's, I wasn't at the last meeting. I was mom that night going to a wonderful concert. I think the, to the people, not just Director Atkinson, but to the board directors who signed this letter, applaud your advocacy. You said and did what you felt you needed to do, but while I don't agree with its premise at all, this is actually beside the point. It's, there's a concern for me that now twice, this isn't an agenda item, and this whole campaign was done in secret until I happened upon it on my Facebook feed, which is how I found about it, found out about it. Everything about our district's MS HSL membership and the policies is board work. And we vote on our membership every year and we receive updates on it through board representation and through Mr. Marshall. And we celebrate things quarterly through these updates. Sports, concerts, plays, and yes, the federal administration has threatened to pull funding because of our membership and the policies we abide by. But any talk of funding or a budget or school finance has to take place at the board table, and this did not. So additionally, this issue is not outlined in our legislative platform that we voted on earlier this year. And I am not saying that we can't advocate for things that are not in that piece of paper, but I would have hoped and maybe even expected that all board members would have received at the very least a courtesy heads up on any advocacy outside of that before a statewide campaign launch and a media blitz. I also have concerns that there was quorum, unintended or not. When four board members take action or discuss what I believe is board work outside of this boardroom, that is a quorum and that breaks open meeting law. And this list or website was not sent to all directors. And as the website states, you signed this letter with your personal email addresses, and it doesn't matter. You sign this letter as a board director. And in fact, only school board directors in our state could sign this letter, so it wasn't open to the public. And that makes it board specific. And so you signed on behalf of our district. So we are talking about our board handbook tonight, which I hope we have a little bit more time to do because that is a very big project. So I hope that we have a little bit more time with that. It outlines a lot of this. So I hope that before we talk about what's in that board handbook, we have assurances at this board table that we're going to abide by it and keep each other accountable. So it doesn't matter whether I agree with the present premise, excuse me, of this campaign or not. It doesn't matter, but it's board work in my mind. And so we've had twice. I appreciate the sentiment and I appreciate that you felt what you had to do. But it's board work, and I feel like it should have been done at the table. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
I'd also like to make a statement. While I appreciate the apology, I didn't appreciate the soliloquy that happened. That was in violation of what was on the agenda. It should have been stopped, so I posthumously also add on to the point of order. But the ending of the apology is please contact me for more information is not appropriate and should not have been part of that. This is not a self-advertising forum. Okay, for things that are outside this board, for personal agendas. So that was wholly inappropriate.
All right, thank you.
Director White, I would just like to add. Director Olsted, I appreciate you sharing your thoughts. I did, I tried to be as clear and transparent with our board as quickly as I knew that this project was coming together.
This, this needs to stop, Dirk.
I did, I did email the board about this. Every single board member received information on this. So for now, to have two board directors facing the truth and they knew nothing about this is a little discouraging.
After the fact. You emailed after the fact.
Okay, I think I need to move on. I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we can keep this offline. If you'd like to, again, like I said, if you have any questions, please feel free to contact me.
That's exactly.
All right, we're going to move on to the public forum.
Thank you.
We have two speakers this evening, and we will start with Joel Molesky.
Off topic, I fully support the school rejecting the ideology that offers false hope to the vulnerable by claiming one can choose gender. Revisionist history, the school's response to the federal holiday. This is kind of the topic of what it was. I was just in the middle of writing this today. Hello, my name is Joe Molesky. I currently have two kids that attend Prior Lake School District. I'm here today due to my concern over the school's involvement on the revisionist history. Recently, I have been in contact with the school board and superintendent in regards to my concern. The response I received to my concern specifically from the superintendent was belittling and excluded any sense to a well-thought-out response to my concern, which unfortunately is how most my interactions with the school administration have been. In regards to the superintendent respond, response, it was with that all-too-familiar reflexive response from a bureaucrat mindlessly parroting policy rather than coming up with any sort of rational thought. The superintendent isn't the only one that offers me this answer. I have asked what goals our leaders within Prior Lake have with our kids. And rather than the correct response of my goal is to ensure we provide the ability of every child to succeed after school, I always met with the response, my goal is to comply with the Minnesota Department of Education expectations. This to me says we have an administration more impassioned with bureaucracy than the future of our kids. This only highlighted when my concerns about the revisionist history is met with quote, "We are not engaged in revisionist teaching." Again, the component of teaching something about Indigenous American history on that day is directly tied to state law. This neglects answering why a state law means focusing on Indigenous Day doesn't make it revisionist history as Minnesota doesn't determine what is and isn't American history. Nor does the law that is referenced even demand any specific way that Indigenous Day needs to be addressed or observed. What is stated is that an hour must be dedicated to the day through observance where it never spells out the criteria to fit what it means to observe the day and only offers suggestions rather than demanding what's needed to be done. Until proven otherwise, the legislation used as an excuse is a virtue signaling waste of ink that placates toward those that are driven by emotion rather than logic. According to the legislation that is being used as an excuse, you could have the school operate as normal and just say that's how the district chooses to observe Indigenous Day. As to why this is a revisionist history, it completely belittles the very people the day tries to celebrate. Rather than adjusting the reality that North American prior to colonization, where the people that inhabited land were a diverse group of people, this holiday homogenizes a group of people with over 300 different languages, with thousands of different cultural practices into one amorphous category. To me, it seems comparable to thinking there is only one Asian culture. If created an amorphous group out of thousands of different cultures into one isn't revisionist history.
Did you wrap it up?
Well, if it's not revisionist history about that, then how about a holiday, how about a completely non-foreign culture replacing an American holiday? I never timed this out, so I can't, I guess.
Yeah, three-minute time limit, I'm sorry.
But yes, I do. I want, I will be here every, every meeting until I get, you know, addressed. I'm looking for, I'm not looking for people to like, you know, exclude, you know, the people that inhabited America's history prior to America. I'm asking for my, you know, school to actually recognize a federal holiday and not revise it and replace it with a culture that doesn't need, that has nothing to do with the Western society.
All right, thank you.
So, yes.
Appreciate it.
I will be here every week or every meeting, though, until I get this resolved.
Next, and our second speaker is Mark Kleckner. And again, I probably forgot to say that our time limit is three minutes per speaker. You do your best to stay within that.
Yes. All right, school board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As you review the latest elementary boundary options later tonight, I'd like to offer a parent's perspective on the data that you will soon see. I have two children in a district with a third starting her journey next fall. Based on the board packet that I've reviewed tonight and the advisory committee feedback scenarios, C and E appear to be the most favorable options. Both options, under consideration, meet the minimum requirement for the boundary changes. And as you guys, as everyone knows, know the guiding goals are to balance enrollment across our schools, keep transportation costs low, and minimize disruption to students, families, and staff. I respectfully ask that you place particular weight on the option that moves the fewest students. If both options meet the criteria, it's reasonable to compare how many children will be uprooted from their current schools. Scenario C moves 580 students. Scenario E moves 679 students. Nearly 100 more students and families impacted, a guideline that we are trying to minimize. Capacity also matters. Under scenario E, Five Hawks, one of our oldest schools, would be at 80.2% capacity. As we seek balance, does it make sense for our oldest building to carry the highest enrollment? Scenario C brings Five Hawks to 75% capacity and keeps our newest school, Hamilton Ridge, at a low 62% capacity, leaving room for growth, not only at Hamilton Ridge, but also the other schools. I also recognize that scenario C would require a start time change affecting a number of students. However, if scenario C moves fewer students overall, many families may prefer remaining at their home school and adjusting to a new start time over being relocated entirely. Further balancing can be achieved through where we place our open enrolled students. In closing, please prioritize the option that minimizes disruption for our resident students and families. Scenario C moves the fewest students. Then use the open enroll placements to further fine-tune capacity. While I know you guys aren't deciding tonight which boundary scenario the district will adopt, I would ask that you keep these stats in mind as you consider the impact to resident students and families for next school year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving down to the purpose and agenda, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White, board directors. This evening, we have a couple of proclamations that we'll review this, tonight. We will engage you all on some consensus around our calendar start times and end times for the year, given some changes to legislation. We'll discuss a little bit about our elementary attendance boundary with some recommendations for the board to consider. We will give you an updated five-year forecasting model and then have a discussion around board budget priorities. And then the board will also take a look at some of their language within the school board handbook. That governs a lot of your work. And then closing out, we'll have some minor edits to Policy 722.
Thank you. All right, first off, then we have a couple of proclamations. And Director France, if you would read the proclamation for National School Psychologist Week.
National Schools Psychologists Appreciation Week, November 3rd through the 7th, 2025. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes November 3rd through the 7th, 2025 as National Schools Psychologists Appreciation Week. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas during the week of November 3rd through the 7th, 2025, schools throughout the United States will celebrate National Schools Psychology Week to highlight the important work school psychologists and other educators do to help all students thrive. Whereas school psychologists apply expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to help children and youth succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. They provide assessment and support to students and partner with teachers and other professionals to create safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools psychologists for helping all students thrive and declares November 3rd through 7th, 2025 to be National Schools Psychologists Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you. Thank you to the school board for recognizing this group. I know that we're recognizing a lot of people all the time. But we have seven school psychologists, E-12, that are an integral part of our special education and intervention services. So I am very grateful for them, and I think, you know, as every other group, we have some of the best. So thank you for recognizing them, and I don't know what my next thought was, but thank you.
Next on the agenda, I will read the proclamation for Community Education Appreciation Week and National Community Education Day. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes November 10th through the 14th, 2025 as Community Education Appreciation Week. Our district's more than 200 community education staff, advisory council members, and volunteers provide learning opportunities and resources for our community to develop lifelong skills. This week, we express our gratitude for these community educators. Whereas National Community Education Day will be celebrated on November 13th, 2025. And whereas community education staff and volunteers deliver and support a wide range of educational opportunities for learners of all ages and stages of life, from early childhood to youth programs to adult education programs and more. Whereas the members of the Community Education Advisory Council serve the crucial role of sharing community perspectives to advise the department and the director in the fulfillment of the department mission. Whereas the Board of Education encourages all community members to engage in community education through participating in the wide variety of activities, programs, and services, helping provide new opportunities or serving on an advisory council. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to the community education staff, advisory council members, and volunteers for serving our entire community with learning opportunities and resources to develop lifelong skills and declares November 10th through the 14th, 2025 to be Community Education Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Chair White, members of the board, and Dr. Thomas. Bobby and I are honored to be here this evening to speak on behalf of the entire Community Education Services team in recognition of National Community Education Day. As you know, Community Ed covers a wide range of program areas from our youngest learners and ECFE to our active older adults. We also oversee district facility use and kids company childcare. We are dedicated to fostering lifelong learning through inclusive and supportive programs that engage all students and promote citizen involvement. We have an extremely talented and dedicated team that strives each day to provide the highest quality services and programming to our students, parents, and community members. It is truly a team effort. In recognition of National Community Education Day, we offer two free classes, one for adults and one for youth. Both of those classes are actually full now at this time. But in addition to that, we are also offering 20% off of new registrations if you register between November 13th and the 30th. And this was promoted on the back of our fall catalog. We would like to thank district staff, administration, and the board for your continued partnership and support of Community Ed. We are grateful for your cooperative spirit in allowing us to serve our students and families. It is this collaborative effort that allows us to meet the ever-changing and diverse needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to oversight of operations. School year calendar start and dates for '26, '27, and '27, '28. Robert.
Good evening, everyone, Director White, directors, superintendent. What you have in the board packet is one of the roles I've been assigned to is leading our calendar committee to draft some calendars for the upcoming two school years, for '26, '27, and '27, '28. And in the board packet, as you can see, there are, there is a new Minnesota law, the House bill there and the Senate bill, which allows the school districts to vote to start earlier for '26, '27, as well as '27 and '28 due to how late Labor Day falls now on those two years. So in order for the calendar committee, we felt that in order to start the work, it would be nice to know what the school board, you know, would like as a start and end date for those two years before we kind of start diving into making a lot of drafts and not knowing. So we're looking for consensus at the November 10th meeting, depending on. And the new temporary law, just some of the bullets there, is Minnesota enacted in 2025 provides a temporary exception to the state's traditional post-Labor Day start for '26, '27, and '27, '28. Now, this law allows individual school boards to vote to start their school years before Labor Day if they choose, which gives them the local control over their calendars. And because this is now is local one, there's no universal statute that dictates when schools must start after Labor Day in 2026. So what you have in front of you is the, what the dates would be if you looked at '26, '27 before Labor Day with a start date of August 31st and an end date of June 3rd, 2027. And if you went after Labor Day, it would be September 8th, 2026 through June 9th, 2027. And then for '27, '28, if you went before Labor Day, it'd be August 30th, 2027 through May 31st, 2028. And then if you went after Labor Day, it'd be September 7th, 2027 through June 7th of 2028. So that is the information in regards to the calendars for the '26, '27, and '27, '28 school year.
And action will take place on the 10th? Is that the plan?
Correct, Chair. And tonight, before our time, or before our staff go into the time and resources of a schedule, getting consensus of do we start before or after? In between, they'll work through all that, but they don't want to run down a calendar that the board ultimately is saying, no, we don't want to do this. But I would just advise the board that if, you know, starting, it's a two-year approval. This may have staying power. It may not. We don't know. But if we would do it, we would do it for the two years for sure. And based upon feedback, we can ask our community, you know, about that. But again, just wanting to get consensus, should we go, build out a calendar for you for before or our traditional after Labor Day? That's what we would like to seek tonight.
Director France.
So I've got a bunch of questions with this. First of all, from the teacher's perspective, from the educator's perspective, is it easier for them, particularly since they normally do rolling starts for, let's say, sixth graders, kindergartners, all that, and, and assessment time to have that Labor Day break and then start full-on with the students? Or do, do they not feel that will help them and actually cause too much of a gap in, in, let's say, the progression of how the week and the year goes?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I'm going to maybe defer to Dr. Anderson or Dr. Thomas, who'd maybe have a little bit more knowledge. And we have not had a calendar committee meeting yet because we've kind of been waiting to know what our marching orders are going to be as from the start and, and end date. So I haven't had an opportunity to talk with the teachers yet, but-
Yes. Director France, I'll, I'll share that, that week, to your point, how we have this rolling start is really a soft launch. And so I think having that time and that breakaway to come back then into core instruction would actually go, go well. You know, in terms of getting what we need to done and then coming in to, you know, when we start, we're, we're on. So just a perspective to offer.
Have this, has this, except for in our board book here, has this gone out to parents who often also spend that last week on vacation? And obviously, the sooner we can get them an answer, the better because we don't want to interrupt any of that time. Has there been any feedback in the past or anything currently, since this has been out there for a week, from any parents or families?
Director France, we did entertain this conversation at the last calendar cycle. And that's when we were attempting to look at a potential two-year calendar. One would be starting normally this year, and then next year was going to be the, before Labor Day. I'd have to find the notes on feedback that previous leadership did on that calendar committee to, to see if they, you know, what that perspective may have been. I don't have that tonight.
All right. And then my last question was, this changed graduation? Or allow teachers more time to prepare at the end of the year for final grades? And have that break before that rush?
I mean, depending on how we schedule the days in between, either one of those could allow for that.
Okay, thank you.
Jess.
Question and comment. So question, if, if we were to start after Labor Day, like how many days would we need off? Sorry, how many additional days would we need on the calendar during the school year to accommodate that, to meet the requirements? So we have a minimum number of days of instruction required?
So what you have here would get, is our sandwich, is our bookend?
Okay.
On, on both models, before and after are the bookend dates at the earliest and latest that we could then squeeze our instructional time in.
Okay.
Instructional days, sorry.
So no, like additional days required in? So I just, feedback personally, as a parent, and I think feedback that I've heard is our summers are short in Minnesota. I don't favor starting before Labor Day. I looked at like a few neighboring school districts around, and I know several districts have not set their calendars yet. But I do think it's important to try to align to some of the districts around here. And I just noticed, like, I think EP, Lakeville, and Burnsville had them, they have them available. Eden Prairie and Lakeville instead just took, they have a few extra days of courses during the Christmas break. So they're going like December 1 to December 23rd, I think, both of them, or 22nd. And then starting after Labor Day. So I don't know if that's an option if we're trying to get the calendar days in, but I would be more in favor of, of that and still starting after Labor Day.
Other questions, comments? Jessica.
Thank you. I had the same questions about feedback from staff and families. So I'm personally a little uncomfortable kind of leaning one way or another without getting that feedback because I think it's important. And I do remember, Dr. Thomas, last year when we were talking about this, I remember we did, you know, generally speaking, talk about this. Remember that, too? Would it, I know you're looking for some direction tonight, but I just, I don't know. I personally can see pros and cons to each. My, so there's my comment, but then a question. So the bills have these two years only, and is that only, sir, that because Labor Day is later in the calendar year? And so that's why it's these two years specifically, because they very specifically say that?
Yes.
Okay. They never actually said that in anything I read, like a reason for this.
Yeah, that's what we've been told. It's just the lateness of how Labor Day falls on the calendar.
Okay. Thank you.
Charles.
I agree with Director France, Director Olsted, and also Director Mason with the, hey, we have short summers here and we want to entertain that. But my only additional would be, have we talked to Director Marshall? And where starting earlier? How that might affect summer sports and/or summer programs and fall sports? And what are all the other school districts? I understand Director Mason already mentioned that she looked at some of the other calendars. They might not be out. With those starting, would that have an effect on- With those starting, would that have an effect on any of those items? I would, I don't want to speak for him or anything like that, but I would like just that to be part of the conversation along with parents and teachers. Obviously, most of our kids play sports, and I think that is going to have an effect on it.
Director Johnson, so yeah, there's, there's kind of a mixed bag of conversation in terms of what districts are doing, in terms of starting before, after. We're talking about seven to nine days, depending on the year, of basically a week ahead of time. And in terms of the sports, again, at that timeframe and when we're looking at school, the, the game schedules are not such that they're going to be impacted by, you know, our current reality. If we started earlier, they could still have essentially an extra week of practice time before that they would actually get into the games, but the schedule could actually still remain the same throughout the school year because none of our key games are going to be at the bookend. We might have tournaments that run over, things of that nature, but your core sports are done in time before school lets out. So I wouldn't anticipate a, a challenge there. And like I said, there's mixed conversations that are happening with a variety of different districts. And to Director Olsted's point, you know, resort owners and state fair participants are the biggest hurdle. That's why this has never come forward with any semblance of, of a conversation. It is simply due to the lateness that may impact some, you know, schedules and would only be for this two-year window. I, I would not go in and out. I think if we make a decision, it'd be something that you'd probably want to see it through to get a good understanding of how that works. But, you know, it's something, there's a couple of quick questions that you all have that I'm sure we could get information on, send that to the board just for some perspective, and then perhaps through some of our one-on-one conversations, I can use that to guide the conversation that we go into with the calendar. So again, we weren't voting on it tonight. We're just trying to get a sense of where the board may have been from previous conversations that we've had, you know, a year ago.
And Director Johnson, just to piggyback on the superintendent, just from my previous district, we were before Labor Day start and having kids that participate in athletics, there was no impact on starting before Labor Day with any of their activities. So I would not see any impact, but we'll definitely make sure that we talk to Director Marshall as well.
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And I had one more question. And so I, like you, Director Cothern, does that, I caught it that right? It's, you're brand new, so. The, I, I've been in school districts before the governor made the declaration that we're going to start on Labor Day, and we had rolling starts and ends all over the state. The, the, the concern that I, that I have is the number of students impacted overall, and is that significant because of that rolling start? So in other words, if you really are using that time in advance of, let's say, Labor Day to do the orientation for kindergartners, sixth graders, and ninth graders, and the assessment, and it's not affecting all the families in the district, that may also have an impact. And I'd like to kind of understand those demographics and statistics also, if that can be included in there.
Director France, can I clarify the, when you say the demographics, you mean the amount of people who actually participate during that week?
Correct. Yes, because obviously juniors and seniors aren't doing that. We have the ninth grade orientation, you've got the kindergartners coming, you've got assessments, right, assessments. So, and that may also impact, you know, what families feel about that time, starting summer earlier or, you know, summer later. And they may change their opinion based upon if that impacts them, right? Or at least it has an immediate impact for the next couple of years. So I just kind of like to get an idea.
Director Atkinson, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was just going to say, my feedback doesn't really change based on, we had this conversation last year, and the feedback that I've heard from constituents and from teachers that they would love our district to do a Labor Day to Memorial Day holiday, or from, bookend the holidays for summer. And I know that other districts do do that. So I would love to see a calendar scenario where we leave Labor Day to Memorial Day. And then, so that's my feedback on the calendar. And then secondly, do we have to approve two years? I know we, we were recommended to approve two years last year, and we only approved one based on board feedback. So where is the two-year approval coming from?
Director Atkinson, no, the board doesn't have to. Again, just trying to be planful for our community and families to have more than one year at a time. So again, that's, that's an option. That's not something that has to happen.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
I have a question on that. Would we have enough school hours or instructional hours to actually bookend it that way? Because I thought we're basing it...
If we bookended holiday, a holiday, we'd have to do a significant compression in between in terms of our days and what that would look like in terms of breaks and things of that nature. That has not been something that we've ever vetted, but...
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head how many days, that calendar days of, of school that that entails and where that would sit.
And that's what I was asking also, like, if we try to bookend the holidays, how, how many days would you need to have extra in the school year of additional instruction?
And Mike, I guess my only comment is that I can understand the, the, the desire maybe to start early. I would just say that even though Labor Day does run a little late these two years, that wouldn't put graduation necessarily any later than we've ever had it in the past. I mean, I know I've sat on the stage on the 10th or 11th before in, in the past. So it's, I wish we were gaining a little more. For me, it'd be a little bit easier to, to say one way or the other. So I guess if you're looking for, you mean, still looking for consensus?
I think, I think I have good information from the board that we can vet out before we bring it to the board for conversation and, and action in, in a future date.
Okay. Good? All right, thank you. Next, we have the elementary attendance boundary discussion. Mr. Powers?
Greetings, everyone. Let me see if I can pull this up.
Let me see if it's my computer. Something does smell like it.
All right. Much of this information is things that we've gone over. What we were able to do at our last meeting with the Advisory Committee for Finance and Operations was to narrow it down. So we've got the two options that were narrowed down at the committee meeting. Right now, I'm showing on the, on the screen the current boundaries. And then as we are looking at the options that we came from out of the meeting, first is Scenario C. As you can see, there's not a whole lot of difference in a couple of areas. Glendale mostly contains the same area it's always contained, just adding a little bit of the north side of the lake. Jeffers Pond expands to cover the rest of that area that Westwood had on the north side of the lake. And in this particular scenario, Hamilton Ridge basically takes over the entire east-south side of the lake. As we're looking at the numbers, directly impacted 580 students. That includes the 343 at Westwood, 156 at Hamilton Ridge, and then a couple of the locations. We've got Five Hocks and Jeffers Pond that some of the students will change. Capacity-wise, average is about 69% because this one averages things, the low side 62, high side 79.62%. Now, this is all before open enrollment comes in, and that will obviously change things. Then as we're looking at Scenario E, once again, Scenario E, the north side of the lake is split between Glendale and Jeffers Pond. The south and east side of the lake is split between Redtail and Hamilton Ridge. As we're looking at the numbers, directly impacted 679 students. That's those 343 from Five Hocks, Five Hocks, excuse me, Westwood, the four from Five Hocks, 40 from Jeffers Pond, 93 from Redtail, and 199 from Hamilton Ridge. Now, as you're looking at the capacities, Five Hocks is at 80%. Everyone else is bouncing around between 61.39 and 69.94. Once again, these are before open enrollment numbers are brought in. Now, as we're looking at the analysis, both of them meet all the requirements. Both of them are mostly pretty balanced. There's one school in each scenario that will be at a higher capacity than the other ones. Average bus rides will still maintain 30 minutes or less. Scenario E seems to be more future-proof considering where the growth patterns are looking at, and it does not require a start time change. So we're looking at the total students affected, 679. When we look back at Scenario A, like I mentioned, they meet all the same criteria.
Here's C.
C, excuse me. I'm looking at things and my eyes are going buggy now. Bus times still are maintaining 30 minutes or less. We do have one school, it's, well, all schools are below 80%. This one's not as future-proof as the other one because Hamilton Ridge, there again, is in the center of the district. We do have where the quarry is right now that will have some housing in the next few Biggest thing about this particular scenario, we would need to swap one of the earlier start elementaries for one of the later start elementaries. Total that will affect is about 990 students. So combining between the two of those, total effect will be 1,570 students. Are there any questions about that as you're looking at these? Yeah?
Yes. About that in particular, yes. Can I ask that? Just to make sure I understand. Now that you've said it, I think I do. But in Scenario C, when we're talking about 1,570 total students affected, that's a location change and factoring a start time change?
Correct.
So that's where you get that number, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. And then in Scenario E, I'm just on the, the students affected part right now, does not require any start time changes? Okay. I guess I just had to say it out loud, but thank you.
You're welcome.
I have other questions, but I'll wait for you to be done.
Are you done?
Yeah, go ahead. Ask any questions you have, yeah.
So, you know, I think it's important that while it may be disruptive, that it is a one-time change. And, and, and that's what I wanted to have my first question on, which is basically, which one is more cost-effective and which one has a more strategic outlook of not having to change again, particularly with what we know what's happening with building and movement of, of households, et cetera? What we can actually somewhat anticipate? No one knows the future, but you know what I mean? So which one is actually more cost-effective for the district and which one is more likely to, to basically be here for a long, long time?
So looking at it from a past lens, where we were changing boundaries on average every five years, Scenario E has the least likely to change in the next five years. But is, if we're looking at how it's going to affect the costing for the district, neither one of those scenarios will, in honesty, change the costing for much. We're looking at the busing still remaining the same. That's why we would need to switch those start times for two locations. The, the rest of the changes, it really depends on how the open enrollment settles in.
And to qualify the five years, that's, that's pretty much when we built a new elementary school and then had to in order to fill the elementary school. So what I'm thinking is if, if everything remains the same and we don't close another school and we don't open another school, that demographically and proportionally, this one should at least stay the test of time or at least...
That is...
Has more staying power.
Definitely my hope, yes.
So both scenarios have more staying power or one has more than the other?
If I'm looking at it from where the demographics are in the district, and this is one of the things that we were talking about in the committee as well, Scenario E offers a more flexible approach to adjusting where the new growth is going to happen.
And if I may as well, the growth that Director France, you're mentioning, is not the growth that we're expecting. So we had a rapid surge during that time, which is, you know, prompting a lot of boundaries and reopening, or opening schools, building schools, et cetera. We're talking about growth over the next 20 years or so. At an incremental level to the tune of, for every rooftop, we may see .75 to 1.0 student coming out of that. So we're not going to necessarily see the type of enrollment that we saw perhaps in the past.
And I'm also asking about zoning, so I assume that's part of that. So if we have open land that has been zoned...
That's accounted for.
Mixed-use business or residential and, and high, and high-capacity residential, then multi-unit housing, then, then we know that now and we have every, and every anticipation of that zoning not changing to mess with us?
That's an interesting question. It's, we know the city in both cities, and what they're saying is potential, and what, right now, what they're thinking may happen are two completely different things. Their hope is, is that they hit that, the city of Prior Lake between 50 and 100 new construction builds. The city of Savage is thinking between 20 and 50, and they're running on a room. So there really won't be much more additional things in that area. But, yeah, I don't know if you had anything else to add to it?
No, no, I would just say that again, we, we obviously have no control over zoning, and whatever the city decides to do, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, is going to be up to the city. But at this time, what we know today, the data that we have today, this one has, Scenario E has the flexibility and more staying power.
And one of the things, and I want to highlight this again, sorry if I interrupted. When we're talking about the new housing starts, if you think of it, every house is .75 in round numbers. So even if there's 100 houses built, we might get 75 students out of that, we might not. And that could be from zero to seven years' time after they build that house. You know, that's a long-term look at how you're looking at for the zoning and the construction. If they buy a new house, they're a new family, they might not have kids for a few years. If they'd have kids when they build in, or they're putting in there, it might jump in right away. So as we're looking at those things, then again, Scenario E still has more staying power and more flexibility.
Lisa, did you have anything? Okay.
I'm just, see, I see here on, on Scenario E, with Five Hocks already at a little over 80% capacity, I guess, I'm not sure what their open enrollment numbers are. Is there a point, I guess at what point would you feel comfortable having to close that building off to something like open enrollment since they're already starting out at 80%?
Correct. So that, that's right at that threshold of where we would be looking to close down open enrollment based upon overall school capacity and then individual grades. We really don't want to fill a school more than 80 to 85%. So keeping that as our older school with our primary residence and then redistributing open enrollment through some of our other campuses, that would be the logic behind that as well.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
In the finance committee, that was a question, too. But I thought, we had stated the target capacity of a school is 80 to 85% in district. Is that, or you were saying with open enrollment?
Total, like, you, you want to have 80 to 85% capacity, period, because of some of the development pieces, ebb and flows of, you know, we don't know what open enrollment will do or what developments may, may come that aren't on the radar but suddenly come onto the radar. So you always have that wiggle room, you know, to not fill 100%.
As far as capacity-wise, I'm just trying to figure out how to phrase this question. So there's an area looking here that would, that goes to Five Hocks on E and C. And, yep, 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 right there. So I'm just thinking transportation-wise, and it already is Jeffers now, if I'm reading the map, yeah, Jeffers now. What was the decision with that? And then would that balance the two schools out a little bit more?
So that's a, that's actually a, a much more in-depth question than you probably So, that's a, that's actually a, a much more in-depth question than you probably realize, and that's a very good one.
No, I'm, I'm sure it is, and there's a reason behind it, that's why I'm asking.
And, and that's why I'm, I very much wanted to make sure that we touched on this, and I'm, I'm glad you brought it up. So, as we're looking at the scenarios where we're putting extra students into, you know, Jeffers Pond or Five Hawks, one of the reasons we went with this one was actually having to do with the transportation side. But it, there's also another hidden side to this. So, when we talked with the transportation company, that particular north and west side of Spring Lake happens to be routing-wise more efficient for them to bring it to Five Hawks than it is to bring it to Jeffers Pond. But one of the other things that we were talking about is making it this particular way gives us that, that chance that we can keep the nature-based programming at Jeffers Pond. I don't know if we will be able to, it really depends on how the enrollment goes for open enrollment and everything else. But keeping that section of that northern part of Spring Lake in Jeffers Pond puts Jeffers Pond another sixty, seventy students higher, which puts it a lot more questionable for our nature-based programming.
And I'll just reflect from our committee conversation. The nature-based, the nature-based preschool program is, is a huge program for us. And there, there was some good discussion around the prioritization. That actually brings enrollment not only to pre-K, but it's a good stepping stone to having permanency of our K-12 enrollment. And so, also aligned, you know, with our East M initiative and the proximity of the woods and everything, it really makes sense there. So, I just want to share with the board that that was another conversation that we had as a committee. Based upon factors, you know, as we heard from some of our community tonight, how we balance the open enrollment? Because by state law, families have to say, these are my top three. Doesn't mean that you'll get them, they just have to submit them if they would like. But we will ensure that obviously the folks who live here are prioritized, as well as looking at some of our programming that has maybe a second and third order effect on enrollment. That's another area that we would take into consideration. For example, if nature K, pre-K is one of those key priority areas, then we would balance open enrollment around that to say, okay, no more at JP because we're going to have to look at, you know, preserving space for that while we then shift that open enrollment to other campuses. So, just want to let the board know that was another big conversation that we had in committee.
Where, can you tell me where, I understand, right, point seven-five to one per head in growth? Where is that? What areas are we looking at that growth?
Bigger question. So, I'm going to hop around so I can point out these areas for everyone. So, one of the areas of growth up north of McColl, right up in this area.
Okay.
One of the other areas of growth, we've got Redtail over here where the new apartments and everything are. We've got, there's scattered areas over in this area that potentially could open up, but the land isn't available at this time. And then we're also looking at right off of forty-two, there's a bunch of different chunks of land up in that area. And like I mentioned, this area right over by Spring Lake, that area there. There's always the chance in other sections, but those are the ones that have been highlighted to us by the city.
Anyone else? We good?
Question?
Okay.
Oh, I can't get a phone.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
I need to exercise more, that's what that is. I did have a couple of questions. In, I lean toward the least impact to students, right? In terms of location change and start time change. Has it been discussed about like staff changes? So, clearly, yes, we're, we're closing a, you know, a neighborhood school. But like in terms of staffing changes when, you know, capacity is going up or, or to some degree staying around the same as it is now? But what kind of conversations have we had? And I know this might not be necessarily for you, Director Powers, but for somebody, for one of the other executive directors. What kind of conversations are we having? Because I know we're talking about the least effect on students, but I, I want to talk staff too because that's obviously a huge piece here.
Before we jump too much into that, the, the staffing changes for these two scenarios won't be affected a huge amount, except by location.
What's a huge amount?
Well, look, look at where we're looking at the highest enrollment for the per scenario. Those will obviously be the ones that they'll have to allocate more staff to. But we're having to reduce staff because of a closure as much as anything else. And then we're getting those efficiencies in by having those four sections per grade. So, when we're looking at those types of things, that definitely impacted how we were looking at this. But I'll, I'll leave it to Director Anderson or Superintendent Thomas to talk a little bit more about how we're taking those things and affect, and how the staff will be affected.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was going to say Director Coffin could.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And yes, it's something, you know, both myself and Dr. Anderson have started working on in regards to just taking a look at it. We've been talking with our principals about some of this kind of stuff too. Because of course, as, you know, as you brought up, it's on everybody's mind. I mean, there are going to be staff changes. And so, yeah, we are, you know, trying to look at some scenarios. As far as specific numbers, we don't, I, I don't think we, we don't have those yet. We haven't quite gotten to that point in the staffing process to have those specific numbers. But yeah, what I can say is that, you know, we are very aware and we, we want to work very closely with trying to make everybody feel that we understand that those changes aren't easy for our staff members as well. That we spend a lot of time talking about these lines and, and where our students are going to go. But we also do understand that there is going to be impact on our, on our staff as well. So, we've worked with, we've started talking with our principals and there's been conversations, you know, by Principal Westwood with, with her, you know, with their staff there. We've talked with the union about, about this, about that we are. And one of the things, yes, we're going to start looking at as soon as whatever decision is made here, we're going to have a better understanding of how many students are going to be at each school. So, then that's going to help us start to, start to put a plan together on what the staff at each of those schools is going to look like. So, we'll have a better idea then at that point in time, you know, what's, you know, what school is going to be adding? You know, how much staff is going to be added at one school versus another? And then we'll have a better understanding of, of overall impact. But we have definitely started those discussions.
One more.
Sure.
To that end, as conversations start to happen in terms of, you know, kind of looking into the future for what people's roles and positions might look like, are conversations also happening, realizing, you know, the movement isn't happening at the secondary level? But like, are there conversations for staff to consider, you know, moving into the secondary space? Where and if there's, there's room to do that, I realize. But are they part of those conversations too?
The secondary group?
Yes.
They haven't been as of right now. We've been mainly just meeting with the elementary principals at this point in time. But I will say, I mean, some of our, you know, some of your elementary licensers are, you know, K through six license. So, there's a possibility that if we do have some sixth-grade need, that some of those staff could potentially move into there. And I think the biggest thing we've focused on talking about is we're open to anything that's going to retain as many staff that we possibly have here at Prior Lake Schools, you know, Savage Schools. So, we want to do whatever scenarios are going to retain as many people as possible. And so, we're opened up to any of those scenarios.
Okay, thank you.
All right, maybe one more from Charles and we'll move on.
One last thing. Are the maps that we have here, I know that they're available online. Are we making the, like, these available out here and/or in, in the schools itself?
We just have these two here blown up for up here. But they're online, now people can zoom them as they need to. But these are the only two from a college standpoint that we had professionally blown up.
Sure.
The plan was is to put these in the lobby. So, that people can visit and look at them. But the ones online, they're the same map. The biggest difference is just going to be as they zoom in, it'll start to fuzz out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Last one, absolutely last one.
Absolutely last one. And I know this was discussed the first time we brought up the whole distribution and the various options that we had. But if, if you could just humor me and just explain how you're also considering special education? Because there are different capabilities at different schools, some of them have more capacity than the others. I assume that was considered in the, in the boundaries as well as the capacity of each school?
I can jump on that one. Yeah, we're actually looking at, there's some changes we may need to do at least one of the locations to accommodate the special education needs. Hamilton Ridge, we very well may need to add a couple of walls to enclose the space upstairs to create another classroom space. And then we're looking at, just making sure we're using all the spaces to the maximum that we can, which may mean that some storage needs that we have to rethink how we're storing things. That's, Five Hawks is a good example of that. We're going to have to figure out a way to find ways to store everything that is currently someplace in a classroom or something else.
Does one of these scenarios favor more accommodations and more equivalent accommodations for special needs students?
No.
No, so it's, we're going to deal with that situation no matter what.
Yeah, they, and because of the way that we deal with our special needs students, it's really the, neither scenario is favored in one way or another on that.
Thank you.
And, and one thing I wanted to finish with this part, and then we had a really robust, the two councilmen, or the members can also say that we had a very robust discussion of this in our advisory committee meeting. And we, it was unanimous on the choice for Scenario E. Scenario C was the best of the rest of them, but we definitely came to unanimous decision. And I was, like I said, it was the most robust discussion I could have hoped for, so.
And I just want, I know this might be wordsmithing, but it was consensus around Scenario E unanimous.
Yes, sorry, yes.
It was not unanimous. People had thoughts on everything, but the consensus was clearly around E.
I think if I can add on that, I think there's definitely concerns raised and the number of students we're impacting, right? But just like the map and looking at, you know, future growth was probably the driver with that. And so, I think most people favored that E.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I think we may have lost Director Atkinson.
Yeah, she'll text when she's going to get back on.
All right, we will move on then. Thank you, Director Powers. Next on the agenda is the five-year forecast model, Director Rider.
Thank you. This evening, we are talking about our five-year financial forecast. Quite a bit of information here that is quite a bit to absorb. And I would say that the timing of this information may, may have been better had we had the audit, you know, a month earlier like we would have anticipated. And that would have just given a little bit more information. However, I accounted for that, which is why you see the jump from the fiscal year twenty-six to twenty-seven. Because you will be receiving from us a revised fiscal year twenty-six budget. And so, there's some anticipated changes that are occurring in there. And so, the twenty-seven fiscal year is based off from the twenty-six with some of my adjustments that are known that are larger. And I want to speak to that quickly right up front just because we already have had information that you received in the September seventeenth meeting with regard to our preliminary audited information for fiscal year twenty-five. And we knew we had a couple of areas, few areas, that were more overspent than what we'd like to see. This has adjusted for those adjustments on the budget side for two of those areas. The third area of which was kind of already done as we did our staffing for this fiscal year. But the transportation and the insurance were not adjusted previously. And so, those are two things you're going to see come through in the revised fiscal year twenty-six budget that will come before you soon. But just for your information, has been incorporated before building out the next five years? Because I needed to make sure we weren't having a huge adjustment later that we couldn't already know about right now. Does that make sense? All right, so then as we get into this, I want to start from the top of the memo. There are two different tables listed here. Table one A is going to assume that the current voter-approved operating levy is ending fiscal year twenty-nine and that it would not be there for their forward. Whereas table one B assumes that that would be continued, renewed as-is. There's no assumption of any increase at this point in time with the information before you, okay? It would just be that it would have been an action taken by the board to renew that just as-is for the next ten years, right? Which is possible during, under statute. That's the assumption, okay? Forecasts are built upon assumptions, so there's quite a few that are built in here, and I want to try and touch on those, okay? Next, I want to speak to the fact that as you look at the tables, table one A and table one B, you will see that we have enrollment listed. These are enrollment numbers that we had talked about previously, that we spoke of in the last meeting along with our class sizes for the presumption for this fall, for example. So, those numbers have not been shifted by myself. We will maybe want to consider that depending upon how our final fall, fall numbers come out as we know those as we get closer to the end of December, okay? My point is, these are not set in stone. Please don't think that they will be, they will change, okay? Based on the new information we learn as we go. So, one of those things will be enrollment. Another will be the final outcome on the audit, just to make sure. And I think I've got it pretty well in there, but I wanted to, you know, just make you aware of that. Another would be any changes to the revised current year budget, of which I've already mentioned the biggies I put in there so that those would not be surprised later. And then I would also suggest that there is potentially, it was mentioned to me about, has this been adjusted for any, any savings in the closing of Westwood? And I would say not if it wasn't already involved in a cut coming into this year, okay? So, closing the building and any adjustments, then I would consider that as part of our assumptions and, and our building process for the fiscal year twenty-seven budget that would be now becoming a, a projection off from your forecast because you're going to have what-ifs, right? What if we do this, what if we do that? And so, those would then come through at that point in time. Does that make sense?
But we're not closing Westwood, we're moving to Lago, right?
Thank you very much. And I did misspeak there. The closure of the neighborhood school. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so then I'm on the second page of the memo under enrollment. Just to reiterate the fact that this is showing a three-year weighted ratio applied to the enrollments. You see a table two there that shows the numbers for, that we're assuming for those ADMs, which is average daily membership of the grade levels, I'm sorry, of each school year, with approximately a one to a one-point-three percent decline is assumed, okay? In comparing the fiscal year twenty-six numbers we have for fall so far at this moment, I am seeing that when you look at grades kindergarten through ninth grade, we're pretty close to what you're seeing here on, in our projections at the fall numbers. But remember, these are my end-of-year numbers, right? So, I'm more concerned about the, the secondary, the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders because those seem to be lower than what we were projecting. So, we might have to watch that and see if that needs adjustment as we get to a little bit more into the year. I would also like to make mention of the fact that on the revenue, a two percent increase on the gen ed formula has been assumed. Statute currently says that it could, not to exceed three percent, so it could be somewhere between two and three. My assumptions have been at two. Pointing out also that the current dollar amount for the voter-approved referendum in the district is currently at six hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents per student. This does not have any inflationary factor included, so that's just a point of reference. We will continue to see across subsidy and special education. And I am concerned slightly that depending upon what happens with the, with the task force that is working on that, whether or not that will actually, whether some. whether or not that will actually, whether some special ed cross-subsidy aid that we currently are receiving might be lost, because they can't find a solution otherwise, then it would come from there. So that's something to be cautious of and aware of, and this assumes no change in that cross-subsidy amount, that it wouldn't necessarily, a chunk going away, so that's just an assumption on my part, and I will have to wait and see. Make sense? When it comes to expenses, there were a number of different percentages used here. I did not, so sometimes you can take your expenditures and just say, we're gonna apply 3% across the board. I did a little bit deeper in the fact that I went to the, what we call object dimensions, which is like, how do we spend our money? And so like, the certified staff and the non-certified staff percentages, looking at their contracts to see if there were built-in, other things like steps, lanes, longevity, things of that nature, that are really not on the sell as we talk about it, right? So those are different costs involved. So you will see that these projections, or the forecasts that you see before you for the next five years do include more than what you've probably seen in the past at least three years, I'm told. So I did it a little deeper. So not everywhere did we go higher, but in some cases we did. And that's where those costs are like embedded, and not necessarily just on, on a grid. So with that, we have 2.5% increase on all wage scales for all of the contracts. We have 1 to 3% for services, supplies, and equipment. I have assumed a 3% increase in utilities. I've assumed between 2 and 5% for health, dental, and other benefits. Some of our costs, recognizing the fact that we don't have a lot of control over them for utilities, transportation. Transportation's been addressed with regard to bringing it up to where we are now, meaning we had a pretty big disparity between our budget and our actual costs for fiscal year 25. So that has been addressed in what you will see come forward as a proposed revised budget for the current year, and it has been assumed to be in place then for the future years, 27 through 31. In addition, I did a 6% increase on transportation each year. So those are the assumptions that are embedded within what you see before you. You will see that the revenue is a 2% increase on the gen ed formula, but it's also offset by the declining enrollment. So you're seeing, in some years it's just under 1%, and in some years it's more. So on average, it's around 1% across the board. We do recognize that we, I'm at the bottom of page three, we recognize that we spend approximately 83% of our total expenses and salaries and benefits. So I want to point that out. At the top of page four of the memo, here's what we know. Any potential legislative relief that comes in the form of a one-time infusion doesn't really help a district very much. Additionally, when dollars are tied to specific uses only, that does not assist us with our unassigned fund balance, it does not help us necessarily with some of the needs that we have. Even with the stated increase in the stated formula of somewhere between 2 and 3%, you will find that the increases are, in the revenues would not be sufficient to cover the additional costs that we find happening in our expenditures, okay? And there isn't really a way for me to come up with a model that's gonna show you a revenue that's gonna exceed expenditures. It's just, I don't know how to make that happen. Our enrollment isn't gonna increase that much, I don't think you could realistically believe that that would ever happen. Our expenditures are just gonna grow faster than in revenues, and that's part of our challenge always, right? It's how do we control our costs as much as possible, because our revenues just have a hard time keeping up. Unless, of course, there is something that is addressed with regard to revenue, something additional to what we currently have, that is not included here. What we have is included in these, in this forecast is simply our current referendum as-is, or with it dropping off in 29, okay? Always is the case that when you, I'm at the top of page five, always is the case that when you act sooner on adjustments to the budget, that helps you out for later years. If we were to see a voter-approved, okay, so even renewing our current referendum, there still needs to be a long-range plan for reductions. So as you can see by these numbers, clearly when you get to your, even the third or fourth year out, I mean, no one wants to see that kind of a change in your fund balance, and we would absolutely want to make and take some action, right? So this, the intent of this is not to give you a projection, this intent is simply to show you, knowing what we know now, what we've seen happen in the past, moving that forward, what does that picture look like with us doing nothing? Okay? So now our challenge will be to take this information and to work with it to identify, then, what are some what-ifs? What if we do this? What if we don't do that? You know, different things that we could see and understand what the impact might look like moving forward. If we do nothing, clearly, clearly you can see that we would have an issue in fiscal year 28 where we would be an SOD. And SOD for the public is statutory operating debt. I will pause and see if there's anything I can answer for people.
Any questions? Lisa, do you have anything? No? Anyone else? Amy?
Well, we haven't gotten to the last page of the report, when we, about the enrollment projections.
Oh, yep.
But my question was, do these enrollment projections consider the housing projects that are, are currently underway in the district? Or projected to be? If they're, I know that some zoning might be one-way, but that doesn't mean that it'll stay that way. But just the, the projects, the housing projects that are currently underway, do any of these enrollment projections count the .75? I understand that there's a, all of this is so challenging, because we want to find answers for things that are the scenarios. And anytime you're doing that, you know, it, it's, it's challenging, and it can be frustrating for, for everyone involved to, to be making the best decisions possible. My, I'm just curious if the housing, the current housing projects are in any of these estimates for enrollment.
So what you will find is that the, the enrollment projections are based off from historic information, and in that history, we have had that kind of growth, right? Earlier, further back than most recently, right? So when you do the enrollment projections, there's oftentimes methods you can choose. Am I doing this over a seven-year weighted average? Am I doing this under a three-year weighted average? That's where you kind of determine, like, what do you anticipate's gonna happen moving forward? And likely, if you are anticipating the future to be at a slower pace, and you had heavy growth further back, you know, you're gonna use a shorter timeframe then, right? Which is what we've done. And since last spring, when you had this conversation with Tammy, the fact then was a weighted three-year projection model seemed to work well. When comparing that model to what we're currently seeing and what's happening, it seems to be pacing pretty well. It's a question now of, when you get into the secondary students, it's a little trickier, because, you know, how many of them might be at the ALC versus, you know? So it's like, you can't look at it just, you have to give it a little time and a little bit of study. And so I'm not as concerned at this moment about that, but your 25, 26 enrollment projection numbers at this moment for grades K through nine are looking pretty, pretty right on at this time. So if we weren't to like, lose any, or if we lose just the same as what we gain, we'll be fine for those grade levels, right? It's a question of our, our higher secondary levels that we want to watch for. There is every possibility this should be revised before we do our final preparation of the budget for the fiscal year 27. That's what you're wanting to watch, your fall enrollment, and we want to watch to see how second semester comes about too, and what that means for us. We can always see kind of some growth in that area, those semester changes, and just as well, you can see some losses. So kind of keeping an eye on that and kind of monitoring that is what we're gonna want to do, and that's what we do on a monthly basis, right? With our enrollment report. So I think we're keeping a pretty good eye on it. I feel as though the current enrollment projections for the future, I don't think that they're like overly aggressive, right? At the same time, you know, 1, 1.3% loss in enrollment is not what you've seen in the most recent year. So it's a question of what are we gonna really see going on here? But you have to acknowledge the fact that our incoming kindergarten classes are much smaller than our, our 10, 11, 12 grade, right? And so that's, that's just the nature of what you're seeing across the state. It's not just us, right? So thank you for pointing out the enrollment projections on the back page there. It is also reflected in the table two that you see on page two of the memo.
Excuse me, Director Ryder. We do every so often get updated demographic projections from the county and the cities. I'm not sure if they have been actually updated recently, but I thought that we were due to get some. And I assume that they will be applied to these numbers.
Yep, I'll check into that. They have not at this moment, okay?
Thank you for answering that, and I, I, just even going back to your analysis on page three, where you had, it's like the third sentence, like, there's no realistic enrollment scenario where revenues will exceed expenses. I think, you know, with all of this, again, not to reiterate what was already said, but it's trying to gather the most information so that we can make the best decision. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Jessica?
I have a lot, actually. Just trying to understand, so, you know, I started with last October 14 memo, a year ago, right? We had this five-year projection. We also were given an updated version in May with, with the forecast, and if I look at that for 26, 27, what to me is alarming is that, you know, our revenue is, has a 3% increase despite a little bit reduced enrollment between, let's call it, let's just work from May. But our expenses went from 125 million to 130 million. And that's, you know, after we, we made a lot of cuts, and then also, I have more questions about the building closure, but, you know, it appears that it's not a revenue issue, like, the revenue is in line with CPI and that 3% growth, but it's, you know, we need to get our expenses under control. I think what would be helpful for me, you know, we sat and made budget cuts, the prior boards starting last December, and then us through, you know, five months, and we had, we made budget cuts down to like $9,000 increments, right? And, and made some tough decisions. But suddenly, we're adding 4.6 million, and then if you tack on top of the other projected cuts that we had, nearly 7 million to our expenses with, without like, a detailed line item explanation. So for me, it would be really helpful to understand, because I was trying to back into your math as far as like, you mentioned the insurance, and that percentage doesn't match. So I would love to understand that. I think it would be really helpful for our community to understand that. Any expense increase that you've factored in over the last six months, I guess, or five months since May? And I know you're, I respect that you're new to this, and you're kind of backing into someone else's numbers, so I appreciate that. But I do think, you know, we've made some really hard decisions down to that, you know, low-level dollar amount, and, and to not have like, a really detailed description on all the expense increases is challenging for me.
That will couple with the revised budget.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the, when you look at it in whole numbers, however, your adopted budget, which included all those adjustments that you had made, is at 123.2. You talked about the fact that the preliminary audit is coming through showing a $1.7 million overspend. That's what had to be adjusted, okay? So when you add in that $1.7 million, which is transportation, and some dollars for, I think it's about $500,000 for the insurance, and then the additional costs that we've seen in special education, right? So just, let's just add in the 1.7, for example. Now your 123.2 becomes 125 or 124.9, okay? Now you're looking at something that is very close to a $5 million difference between '26 and '27. There's $5 million difference between '27 and '28. You're seeing a consistent about $5 million increase every year thereafter. And that has to do with the assumptions that I went through earlier as to what I'm using, which is different than what you've used in the past, potentially. And I just think that if we're going to actually stay on top of this, we need to be clear about what our potential costs really are.
Absolutely.
And since 6, since 83% of it is salaries and benefits, we have a very robust benefit program for our staff. It costs, right? And knowing the cost increases that we're anticipating to see in just the area of health insurance, for example, and others, I still feel as though we're being somewhat lower on what it could be, but we also have a very good self-insured insurance program. So I'm counting on that too, to offset some of that. So these costs that you see as far as estimate assumptions, those are assumptions at this point in time. Any one of them, certainly we can discuss and, and change as necessary when we move this forward. And as we do so, everything that you see on this back page after the memo is very detailed. This is done with every single account code. I have every single account code, so you want details? I have that information at my fingertips, it's a question of how to summarize it for public consumption, and at the same time, make it meaningful. So I try to replicate that, what you're seeing on a monthly basis for all the years going out.
Yeah, so I, I think, and back to my question about the neighborhood school, so when, when we made the decision to close Westwood to, as a neighborhood school, we were given that 1.9 to 2.7 million operational savings, so that is not included in these numbers.
Is not there yet, no.
And then I, the other thing I had.
I'm sorry, Director Mason, if I can, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know that was like, an estimated range, but that's not.
Estimated, and it's for capital. So we'd have to look at ways to offset the capital that's within the general fund, it's not necessarily a dollar-for-dollar correlation.
On the deck, it was stated as operational, that's outside of the capital.
Yes, well, I'm, and I'm.
The staff reductions was 1.9 to 2.7.
Oh, I'm sorry, got you.
That's what I was referring to, sorry, yeah.
Got you, done with the bill.
Yeah, no, outside of the capital. So that is not reflected.
Got you, got you.
Okay.
Correct, correct.
And then, also a question around, like, looking at the vocational education, that cost went up quite substantially, like, 500 grand. Is that where that transitional program lies into? I know we were looking at some savings with that too, where's that, and I didn't know what bucket that fell into, I was just.
I'm sorry, can you help me understand where you're at again?
Yeah, so the, um, the under expenditures, expenditures, the vocational education.
Yep.
That one had increased quite a bit from the May, and so is that where that transitions program falls, or what falls in that category?
That's gonna be all of our CTE programming. So when you have, you have courses that are now eligible under vocational education, you're gonna move it from a 200 program series, which is your instructional, over into account codes that reflected as vocational. So you're gonna, you're gonna see where that might increase, you're gonna find that that probably was coming from what was previously a 200 series. So as we develop more coursework that is eligible under the CTE, career technical education, that has a different method of how the state tracks that information and then can potentially calculate some levy towards those costs as a reimbursement. It isn't a full reimbursement, but, so what we want to do is, we want to make sure that as we're recording, and every year that can shift on you a little bit, depending upon your coursework that you're planning for. So if we have eligible coursework that's in the vocational tech ed, or the career tech ed, we're gonna put that under the vocational category.
Is there a reason for the substantial difference, though? Or is that like, pretty typical, that we have so much more going?
I'd have to look to compare the 26 adopted, which I didn't prepare to what we have for our estimate, and I think it's a matter of just taking a look at that a little closer for me.
Okay.
I can do that as we come forward with more information.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, for me, it would, it would just be trying to get kind of that side-by-side compare of, of our prior forecast to what we have today. Again, this substantial increase in expenses is alarming. Again, this substantial increase in expenses is alarming. And so, you know, I realized, like, transportation, great example, where we know that this is a problem, we know that there's a huge increase. But like, it's, you know, the answer maybe isn't just add more money. It's how do we correct it, right? And I assume like the RFP isn't included in this assumption.
That is also not included.
So, just, you know, and that line of thinking. It's not just, let's add money to the budget, let's figure out how to fix these things. And so, having that breakdown, I think, would be really helpful as a board for me.
Well, I think there's a 1% to 3% also inflationary impact in general supplies and things that are considered variable, but also fixed, that are tied to a lot of these programs.
But can I ask you a question on that? Like, that hasn't changed from the last forecast. Like, those same assumptions were in both other forecasts, so.
Possibly not. My assumptions may not have been the exact same that Tammy used, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, I looked at both memos. They looked relatively close.
She did, but they weren't compounded. So, that's, I think, the difference when they did it. She kind of left it flat, but you are correctly including the compound. And yes, we have seen a 6% increase in transportation in previous years. This past one, obviously, was a little bit of a surprise based upon how the transportation was actually calculated on the new contract. And a lot of it, like you said, was special ed. But I did have a question if you could elaborate, particularly for the public, on an example of one of those CTE classes, because I think that'll ground some of the listeners to this conversation.
You might need to help me a little, but I think my understanding on the Career Technical Education courses, they're going to be the vocational type courses. Things like, it can be metals, it can be woods, it can be certain science courses, excuse me?
I thought you said computer science?
Computer science, engineering-type courses, right? It requires a specific licensure of the instructors. And as we have courses that involve those licensures, the instructors then are coded instead to the 300 program series. It doesn't change anything about what they do. It just changes how I have to report them, because we're trying to stay within what the UFAR's descriptions are. So, 200 series mean that that's going to be your instructional and second, elementary and secondary regular instruction. When you move into a course that then is now vocational, that's then going to be shown under a 300 series program code.
And UFAR is out of the uni, uh, the universal financial accounting record system?
Yep.
Like, that example
Yep.
is where I feel like as a board, since we're making decisions on budget cuts, like if there's decisions to offer these types of courses that are having a $500,000 budget change impact, like, that's the decision-making we should be offering, right?
It wouldn't be an increase. It would be a shift.
Shifted out of regular structures and the 1, and the 300s.
I guess that's where it'd be helpful to have that breakdown of like where those shifts are. Because that's, I'm, again, just seeing an increase in that one section, but not pulled out of another. But it's hard to tell, right, from this level?
And the other question that I had is, we have had an emphasis on the tech ed portion of MINT caps. And we've been trying to grow that program out of demand and popularity of that program. And I think that had significant impact in the last couple of years. And this year, I, I'm not sure, but I think it's full, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, and, and I'll know more as I look closer into that. The focus wasn't on exactly who's coded here. It was more the focus of what's the totals to this, to this date.
Lisa, did you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. So, a couple of things. So, just, I'm, I'm just listening, and I want to be clear. Are we going to get a revised budget forecast that had in the teacher cuts we made last year? The move of MINT caps, that was a big deal. That was a big cost savings. So, I know we're talking about these vocational classes. We should actually see a cost savings moving it back from Lakeville. There was the, the selling off of POC as well as the consolidation of elementary schools. Are we going to see a revised forecast with all those components in it?
Some of those, I believe, have already been addressed in your adopted FY '26 budget. And some of them have not because they haven't taken place yet. So, as far as. So, to my knowledge, what you see before you is I've worked off from what we have in our adopted budget currently. I've adjusted it for what I know I'm going to bring forward to you as adjustments coming forward as revised current year, simply because of a result of the audited financial statements from fiscal year '25, which would not have been known at the time when you did the adopted budget. And then for '27 and beyond, any adjustments that had been discussed previously about programmatic changes after we consolidated, that is not reflected. I'd have to get up to speed on those and get those incorporated. So, certainly, we can adjust this forecast for those things. I want to make sure that they're still estimated to be as had been discussed and that they're actually going to take place and that nothing has shifted about any of that. So, what you will expect to see is next board meeting is the report on the audit. The following board meeting is the November 24th meeting, and you would have a revised fiscal year '26 revised budget for the current fiscal year. At that point in time, we can look to see if that changes any of these numbers. But I would say that what we're looking at as far as moving this forward, when you're doing a forecast, the focus is more on big scope, right? What does it look like for, like, the tables 1A and 1B? What are total revenues, total expenditures looking like? You're seeing these gaps. How are we going to narrow that down? It could be in what we do for our assumptions. If some of what I've used for assumptions are too high or too low, we'll have to adjust for those. We can look at that further when we get into our conversations around how are we going to address fiscal year '27. This is where these forecast numbers get really kind of, because of the accumulation of one year on top of the other estimated year, it becomes pretty far out there when you get out to the fifth year out, okay? So, I don't hold a lot of water with regard to what that fifth and fourth and fifth year are going to look like, honestly. My experience tells me as soon as you get to the second and even into the third year, you're really, you're stretching things, right? Because you're going to make adjustments. You're not going to let things get to that point. So, as, the sooner you make those adjustments, then that changes those future forecasts and projections. So, I just, I wanted to be clear that this is, this is the first run at this to give you a sense of where we're at, what we're looking at, giving you a, kind of a feel of the climate, right? Of what we're going to see for the next five years and the fact that there's, there's some real need to address our expenditures, but also a need for us to figure out what we're going to do about revenues.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think the challenge is, like, we have the revenue, right? The revenue's there. We've got, we've got the increase in revenue. We have fewer students, so we're getting more revenue, fewer students. But our expenses are up $7 million. So, I'm sitting here as a board director trying to understand, is the $2 to $3 million that we are going to, we talked about cutting when we consolidated the school district, is that actually reflected in here? Because that for '27, we didn't know. We were given those numbers at a board meeting back in, I don't know, March or April or something like that. So, I, I totally understand what you're saying from a five-year perspective. But I really want to see what '27 looks like, because we've already talked about those cuts. We made those cuts. And then even the $2 million in teacher cuts we made, that should be reflected, because you don't have that gap that we're free, you know, those continuing waivers that we're paying for our staff. So, I, I think there's, I, I personally think we need to go back to the drawing board on '27. Because we don't have, it doesn't, because we have a revenue problem here. We really have an expense problem that we need to take a look at. So, that's just my perspective, high level, looking at this, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I just, so, we've got a 1% increase in revenue on average after you take everything out. We've got an average of 2.8% to 3% increase in expenses just from inflationary factors alone. We absolutely do have a revenue problem. And we've had a revenue problem for a while. So, I just want to make that clear.
I think it's 3%, the math that I did, taking from the last year's budget.
3% increase in expenses?
In revenue.
3% in revenue?
Yes.
So, part of that revenue, I will also state, as much as I'm also adjusting the expenditures in the adopted to the revised for fiscal year '26 current year, for the over expenditure in the previous year, those over expenditures occurred in just, in a large part in the special ed area. Special education funding occurs where you incur the expense one year and you do not receive the revenue until the following year. So, there is an increase. If you look at the revenue, you see there's a $3.2 million increase there from '26 adopted to '27. That incorporates in addition of special education aid in fiscal year '26 that I am anticipating, that didn't exist previously in assumptions. And that is going to step us into what you're seeing. But when you look from '27 beyond, that revenue's flat almost, you know? And that's where the only change from there forward is your 2% on revenue for gen ed formula, adjusted then for the enrollment.
Great, so can I ask a question on that? Because I, I had looked at that special education number two and, and, and the forecast that we received in May, that was 26.88, call it. And now, we're at 26.98. So, that, that was, that was very minimal increase. So, of the 4.6 million dollar increase in expenses, it wasn't in special ed. So, anyway, that's where I kind of go back to. It would be really helpful to have a breakdown of what was increased from the last forecast we saw. It's just.
I'm not working off a previous forecast.
No, I understand, but we have made cuts to get to a budget number, again, down to a very detailed level number. And so, it's, now, we're increasing a forecast by 4.6 million dollars, the expenses, just having an explanation of where did that come from? Like, I, I just, right now, it doesn't, the math doesn't add up.
We made cuts and were to tread water, not to go underwater.
So, this was five months, our forecast was from five months ago. So, what's changed in the last five months? That's all I'm asking. We've increased expenses 4.6 million dollars in the last five months. That's where I'm going. It's hard to understand.
Board-approved reductions occurred for fiscal year '26, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Board-approved adjustments occurred for fiscal year '27 at this point, correct?
Only the building closure discussion.
That's not true. The consolidation of the schools would be for '27, correct?
That hasn't been.
But I think she was saying that was an inclusion.
It hasn't been factored in yet.
We're looking at the net present value of what was reduced in '26.
But it's what you approved, right?
What is approved is the consolidation of schools, closing a neighborhood school, and then the movement of, of our students for boundary changes and teachers and staff as well, right? So, the financial impact of all of that is yet to be determined as we develop our '26, '27 budget, because then we're going to know our class sizes that we're going to be working off from. We're going to know exactly what we're talking about in that regard. I have to get up to speed on, on these savings related to the Westwood change, since it's not a closure of a building, and make sure that we can all agree whether or not those are still in place. To my knowledge, they haven't necessarily been reflected in the '26 budget, which is the basis of my projection and forecast forward.
So, Dr. Thomas, was, were those, was that 1.9 million to 2.7 million dollar operational savings? Was that done, I think it was March, April, May, I don't remember what month, with, with Director Frederickson? And like, do we have the details of where that came from? I assume there, that number was from somewhere. I understand where knowledge transitioned.
And those were estimates of what we, what we may have. And so, as we get more real with our current staffing, we'll look at those again to see, did that track? Again, those are just projections. Same with the potential sale of this. We have a projection of what that might cost. But once, you know, we make those decisions and start going through the motions of readjusting staffing, et cetera, then we'll see, you know, the, the real cost savings or, you know, capital savings, et cetera.
Sure, okay.
I just want to add that, that there's still, the sale of this building and all that, they're one-time.
They're one-time, yes, they're one-time.
And not reflected.
Right.
In any of the projections that we're talking about tonight.
And if you look at the Lers, the third-party estimate, you can see the increased gap very, very clearly in revenues versus expenses, with all things remaining equal with the percentages that you've added in. And so, there's, there's, I, I just don't understand how anyone could say revenues are increasing or, I, I don't, above expenses. They're, they're clearly not.
Again, we were just tying back to the prior forecast provided, not to prior yours.
I would say that we have.
Reg, reg, this is from perspective, so you just have to be respectful of other people's opinions and perspectives, okay?
So, we're going to have, we are going to have more information forthcoming. And the further we get along, the more reflective of reality we will, we will, we will be in front of us, understood. If there's nothing else, I think we can probably move on to the next item, which would be six, seven, 26, 27 budget priorities. Director Ryder, and as, before we start, I want to make sure that we kind of all on the same page here. This is kind of the first crack. I think the, the drop dead date for an actual plan to present to the administration is at the November study session, where they'll need to know exactly what's off the table or however you want to phrase it. And, you know, last year, when Dr. Thomas asked for, you know, what's off the table, there was consensus on nothing. I mean, individual board members made their case for certain things, but four people didn't agree on anything. And so, I think that may have led to some of the confusion about why certain things were brought to the table for cuts. And so, this, I just want to make, make sure that we understand that our job, I believe, is to come up with one or two or three things that we are going to say are off the table when, in advance of the administration beginning the, the reduction process. And so, I just want to make sure that if, if, if we say A and B are off the table, and then administration comes back with cuts in C, D, and E, we really got to be careful as to how much we, we are critical of that. Should it be discussed? Obviously. Should there be rationales made? Obviously. But I think that extended our discussion into what was actually going to be cut last year, because we weren't, we didn't have a clear picture on what we say as a board is off the table. So, I think that's where we got to get to. Let's, let's see if we can find a couple of areas that we're going to say, sorry, you can cut away, but these things don't get touched. And come to a consensus on that and allow the administration to be able to move forward with a clear picture of what the board is after. So, having said that, Director Ryder.
So, I'll, I'll just, you kind of stole the thunder there. I, I would just say this to the board. We, we know that we are going to have to, you know, over the next foreseeable future, we're going to be making significant reductions. And we know that, as we heard tonight, you know, a good portion of our budget, when we're talking about, you know, the budget, it's, it's centered around our staff. You know, that's a people-oriented business. And even when we're talking about programs and reduction or, or keeping programs, it's about FTE, and that's kind of how we kind of break things down. So, what we want to make sure of is that there aren't going to be reductions that we can take, which aren't going to be impactful. As lean as we run, you know, a couple of you mentioned, you know, the $9,000 conversations that we were having. 9,000 times, you know, 5, 9,000 is almost 50,000, right, 45,000. So, it, it all can add up and it all has this cumulative impact. And we want to make sure that as we move forward as a team, knowing that we're going to have to make some tough recommendations, that if there are things that you say, Michael, we want to make sure that as you're making reductions, that you do, do not increase class size targets to, to manage, you know, the, the reductions differently. Okay, that, that's, that's a parameter that we're going to have to live within. Or do not cut any activities that are currently offered. We want to maintain the breadth of activities, or, you know, I'm just hypothetically thinking. And, and so, that's what we wanted to know and kind of have some agreement on, what are the untouchables? And obviously, everything can't be an untouchable, otherwise we wouldn't be making any adjustments. Something of great value to one of you, to a staff member, to a parent, is going to be touched. And we understand that. But we, we, we have this reality before us. And, and so, if we can understand, kind of from a board standpoint, these are the things that you're considering, do not cut in this area, then we have to find other ways to, to bring it. And it can't be 50 things, you know? Three, four things, as Chair White has alluded to, as just some markers, because too many markers, we, we might as well not even go through the budget exercise. So, I just echo a lot of what Chair White just said. And, you know, begin that conversation. As he noted, by November, we would want to have this solidified so that we can bring, you know, some recommend, start bringing some recommendations to you all in December, okay?
If I may, just kind of add the feedback from the finance committee too.
Absolutely, please.
Yeah, so, we brought some samples, again, these are very much samples, get some juices flowing, get some, some ideas from the finance committee. I think probably overwhelming feedback, and I adjusted some of the samples to reflect that a bit, was around, a lot of discussion around class sizes and that, and the classrooms directly. was around, a lot of discussion around class sizes and that, and the classrooms directly being sort of last resort. And Lisa, feel free to correct me if I'm misstating anything. I think so that was a big one. I think also just a lot of discussion around math pathways. And I think the gifted talent, so some sort of sage replacement on the math pathway for middle school students. And then, you know, where we could, I think there was a lot of discussion around community partnerships and where we could come up with ideas there to help with expenses. And, you know, I think just largely around academic excellence and trying to just keep cuts as far away as we can from, from the classroom. You know, we talked about security. I think that one is maybe off here now, but just given, you know, and I guess maybe to just step back to, the discussion was around, it depends on what sort of situation we're in if we're making budget cuts versus, you know, we get a levy passed if, you know, if, if we're able to have funding or where we sit to add things, then security would be a priority. But that obviously may not be the case, so. I think, Lisa, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just add, I think we, you know, Jessica and I, we're also on the finance committee, and when we presented this to the finance committee, we presented it as how do we align our board goals based on our strategic plan? So we really kind of looked at like the four pillars of our strategic plan and then asked for feedback based on those four pillars. And there were definitely some things that rose to the top as far as like what Jessica was saying, as far as academics and keeping those class sizes as small as possible. That was a big conversation. So if we are going to set budget priorities, first of all, I'm grateful that we're doing this because I think it's going to help our board be more aligned with our administrative staff as they have more guidance going through the budget process. So I'm grateful that we're doing this this year. But like I said, I think as a board, as we look at this, we look at like our, our strategic plan and how do these feed up into our strategic plan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Mary?
So first of all, I would appreciate Director Ryder's feedback and direction on this. A, we're closer to statutory operating debt than I think we've ever been in the history that I remember, having lived in this district, not to mention being on the board. So that is very concerning. And I'd like to go back to where the, there are certain guidelines we're not going to be able to touch. There's restricted funding, there's all sorts of things that we can't touch. Obviously, there's wish lists that everyone has. I don't think they're a reality right now at all. But I do want to try to ground us back into certain things like, like the class sizes. If that's a red line, because that's typically what happens with budget discussions, is these are things that we will not cut from. These are, these are our red line threshold. You will not drop below that. And then, of course, keeping the current physical security that we have, we're not going to be turning off, let's say, the, the backgrounds and the badging and, and whatever security doors that we have. We're not going to go backwards from certain fundamental things. And, but there are certain things, of course, that we're not going to be able to enhance and we're certainly not going to be able to cut from. Your feedback on where the actual statutory and required red lines and, and what, if anything, we have to play with, would be very helpful in this discussion.
So one of the things that business directors will look for in working forward in the process of developing next year's budget and bringing forward ideas and projections is going to be that fund balance, that unassigned fund balance that your board policy calls for, that the board is going to be willing and accepting of. That is something that I guess I would hope to understand as a board priority, what that looks like, right? Knowing that, you'll hear this probably from our auditor when he speaks to the audit as well. Our policy has language that may have shifted in the last revision, where it actually says that it is, the unassigned fund balance is your percent of your budgeted expenditures. So all along, as you look at information from me, it's based upon the budget. That's shifted from what had been calculated by the auditors, for example. So for financial purposes, it's always based upon the actuals. And so my point is, as you look at just even the forecast, for example, those expenditures are increasing each year, okay? As your base in that formula increases, it's much harder to get to that eight percent than it is to start with. Does that make sense? So you're going to take your nine, nine million dollars and divide, okay, let me use ten mil. Ten mil right now is eight percent for us at one hundred and twenty five mil. So if ten million is what your base is, but now your expenses are increased to one hundred and thirty mil, and you divide that ten mil by that one thirty, you're no longer at that eight percent, okay? So my point is that as we move forward and we plan for what needs to happen, it's not just about hitting that revenue and expense mark. If you're looking for us to increase the unassigned fund balance back up to the eight percent or there higher maybe, that's something then that we also have to take into consideration when setting our goals with regard to what we're going to do for budget adjustments. So I guess that, that is like, it's kind of broad spectrum, but at the same time, it's, it's kind of key to what we also have to be thinking about. It's not just enough to just cover the expenditures with your revenues if we're already below the point you want us to be at in the future. So from my perspective as a director of business, it's like understanding exactly where we want to be in the future and what those, what are those goals for us from a financial fund balance? Now, here's the thing, so much of our revenue we get from the state is categorical, meaning it's got a restricted or some type of tie to it. The only part that doesn't right now is the unassigned part that is the Gen Ed formula. And if that Gen Ed formula, which as you saw in that, that diagram from Lers, I mean, the fact of the matter is, it just isn't keeping up with what the CPI is. And that's our biggest challenge, right? So if that revenue isn't increasing very much at all, but our expenditures are still going to increase because they're across the board and there's salaries and benefits across the board. We don't get to say, well, you're funded by compensatories, so therefore, you know, you get this. And no, you're not, you know, that just doesn't, that's not how it works, right? So, um, so as we think about what we have to do, the challenge is going to be, if we're cutting in areas that are restricted already, that's not going to help us any on the unassigned fund balance. That's something to consider as we work forward. And as you think about what it is that are the priorities and what we're not wanting to touch, you know, the impact on that unassigned is going to be those things that are already not restricted.
So basically, we're currently at or a little bit above the eight percent. But by next year, we drop and our policy says eight percent. And the following year, we are in SOD. And we are now negative regardless of whether we renew the current levy or not. So we've got a one year, one year reprieve to try and make a lot of changes. And again, we've got some things that we can't touch, like you said, the categorical. So we have some really serious decisions to make on just how much bone we're going to actually cut into and which limb we're willing to cut off. If I, sorry for the anonympical analogy.
So then, so Lisa, then by just, I think the board has to, if I'm hearing you right, the board has to take into consideration, just by following policy, we almost compound our cuts by trying to keep our fund balance. So it's almost like, it's a cut you don't think of. It's not like we're, we have to increase this or something else has to go over and above what you're talking about.
Right, we do have to compound our cuts because it's coming up so quickly.
Yeah, and or when it talks about striving for that, is that a floor that the board has conversation about as well?
That's the other option then.
And that's an option, you know, it's a variable. Not recommending.
Right.
But I'm saying it's a variable.
And I, I don't think statutory operating debt is something we want to be in because then we lose total control over our budget and basically state rules take over what and how we can spend. Is that a correct statement still? There's been no changes to that scary option? Okay.
No, and I think that, I would also just like to point out too, the fact that as you, you'll hear it in our truth and taxation hearing probably as well as, I mean, I've heard it in talking with our, our financial advisors. When you compare what we have for a referendum compared to neighboring districts, we are one of the lowest numbers.
In the state. And not just in the neighboring districts, right? I think we're the lowest almost in the state.
That is where a lot of districts have relied upon in order to be able to make things work. So it is something we have to think about too.
I've spoken with, sorry.
And I've spoken with a couple of the directors in some of our one on ones. And then that conversation also, when we start having, you know, what does the levy cover and what, what a potential future? Again, we're at a point where levies used to be something that would be a value add on top of a base in, in districts. And we're seeing many districts who are successful in passing levies and only two years later, they're making reductions. You know, because it's, it's a general operating issue that obviously we have a local conversation. And as you all know, we need to address a bigger structural state conversation as well. So even that conversation, should that be in our future, it, it's not going to be a parachute that's going to give us a soft landing. It might buy us some time, you know? So these are some, and, and perhaps Chair White, board directors, you know, as we go through our next rounds of some of our scheduled one to ones, maybe this is an opportunity for Director Ryder and I to sit and just get your ideas so that we can kind of collate them or, you know, go through some of the nuanced questions that might come up too. Tonight, you know, not going to do it all tonight, but that might be a better format that will ultimately fuel a conversation that we can bring forward for another iteration of discussion based upon what we hear. Just I'll, I'll make that offer.
So that's all fair to everybody?
I was just going to add something. So, you know, we had talked about, Dr. Thomas, in your goals, we had talked about the, the fund balance and how that was actually one of your goals. So wouldn't it make a lot of sense to write that into our board goal as well?
Uh, yeah, my, my goal aligns to the current board policy. So it's the strive for and, you know, based, based upon the realities that we have before us. You know, we can only squeeze, squeeze so much blood from a turnip. So, so yes, I, I mean, that would definitely be something in terms of a priority that you would match that, because that's what your policy language, I think you already stated in policy. But yeah, it could be definitely one of the things that we strive for as, as a management and governance body. Agreed?
I think, I think the goal of this objective right here, the, the goal of tonight is to really understand, like, if we are going to make a cut, if we're going to make cuts, which it looks like we're going to have to. I mean, personally, I'd like to see everybody's twenty seven forecast so we really know what we're talking about here. But if we're going to have to make cuts, which I think we're still going to have to make cuts, what are those guardrails to be put in place? What are the untouchables?
Right.
That we as a board are giving admin instructions so that when you guys come back with a budget, that, that there is not alignment of, of priorities. And so I think as a board, we need to do our due diligence in setting the rest of the board goals and what are those guardrails we need to put in place? And like I said, Director, Director Mason and I, we took this to the finance committee. They provided their feedback. And then all we're trying to do tonight is to provide that feedback to the board.
So I guess then, Dr. Hackenson, Superintendent Thomas's suggestion is that, I mean, because the, the actual decision by us will come at the end of November at that study session, where we're going to say, here are the three things that you can't touch as you begin this process. Over the course of the next month, during the one on ones, each one of us individually with Dr. Thomas and Director Ryder, you know, make our, our feelings, you know, known, our ideas, throw on the table. And, and then when we come back in November, Dr. Thomas and his team will have an idea collectively. And at that point, we will have to come to consensus on one, two, or pick a number of, of red lines, just like you're talking about, parameters where we're, where we're going to say. You know, we aren't going to, we're going to stay with our current class size parameters. We, that's an untouchable, as an example.
I think that it's timing on that because last year, in December, we were already making cuts. And in, in November, we were given a scenario, this is where we need to start. This was our baseline. And so from a timing standpoint, are we looking at a November board meeting to come back and have that conversation again? I mean, I thought that was the whole point of this board meeting. That's studies such as to have that conversation versus having a, a board meeting.
I, I, so.
Go ahead.
Can I? Good. What I was understanding you saying, maybe I'm misunderstanding, is that our one on ones, we would discuss if we were looking at a potential levy, what types of things we might be looking at. But like, this to me is like, what are the untouchables on the budget cuts?
Yeah, no, that's not what I'm saying.
I'm trying to understand.
I'm, I'm going to go back to how we started tonight. We're looking for the board to give us the things that are untouchable.
Right.
And everything can't be untouchable, right? You're all going to have three or four things that are, and it could be the same, could be some differences, but we're going to reach a saturation point where something's going to get touched. And my, my offer was to, as we have our one on ones between now and November, where we would come back, having some conversation, I mean, you all can talk, obviously talk tonight and maybe there's, you know, a couple that surface. But then in those one to ones that I would bring in Director Ryder along with me, then we would have some conversations with you about some of your, your own individual thoughts on parameters. And then we can collate all of that and say, this is what we heard from the body of the board. Like, here's everything. And, you know, you know, when we kind of thematically group things, here's what rises to the top. And then you all kind of make those determinations for consensus in November, which to Director Hackenson, your point, still aligns for that same timeline of where we were at last year. So we're not doing anything different than where we were last year.
I just, like, I do think it's important tonight to come away with, like, that is the purpose of the study session and for transparency for our community to discuss our priorities, right? To at least come up maybe one bullet under each priority or something. I, I appreciate the offer on the one on ones. I think that's great, but I think it's important that our community.
Maybe we start here. I mean, I've heard it more than once tonight. Is, is there consensus that we want to stay within our current class size targets?
Yes, for me.
Yes, for me.
Yes, for me.
Yes, for me.
Yep, so there's one.
Does that fall under optimized resources or academic excellence or both?
And is it? I think we have to, at some point, whether it's tonight or another night, I think that the fund balance discussion has to be, we have to be serious about it. I mean, we may have to do something that we might be uncomfortable with or completely understand sticking with current policy. So we have a, a real clear picture. You know, we can stay hard and fast on eight percent, but that means this, this, and this.
My question to, to Director Ryder is basically because such a large percentage of our budget is staffing and, and the vast majority of those are in the classroom. The, the question that I have is, are we creating a conflict by saying, keep the class sizes, but by the way, we need to cut in other places? I mean, that's where I need the feedback personally because we say we keep the class sizes, but then we say our fund balance can't drop below, let's say we drop it to four percent with cuts. How much of, of a conundrum is that going to be?
Right.
And, and there's so much categorical in, in that, in that area. I don't know if we cut off that limb, so to speak, if that's a limb we're even statutorily allowed to cut off. That's, that's where I need a little bit more understanding of the boundaries, particularly with all the additional mandates that were put on in the last biennium. I, that, that concerns me because it's, it's still something I'm trying to get a hold of, of what we're supposed to be doing and, and all that. That's what I'm concerned about. So if we, if we make that red line tonight and say, class sizes will not change, how will that impact twenty seven and twenty eight? And what other variables do we actually have to choose from?
Right, so as I take a look at this, these are budget priorities. And so let's say that's one of them right there, right? So that's the case. As we develop twenty seven, you're going to ask me that question. I'm going to bring forward to you, here's what it looks like with our current class sizes, which is a budget, budget priority. Here's what it does with the whole picture, right? And if, and that's where it's like, well, what if we were to modify that? Because although it's a priority, you might find you have to have discussion that takes you down below that. But that would be something that would not be like, this is our solution. But that would be something that would not be like, this is our solution and the only solution. It's about, let's have that conversation. That, that's my perspective. It's like.
It allows us to bring a, a recommendation to the, to the table that reflects the, the guardrails, using that term. Whether you choose to uphold those because of some of the unintended consequences from that, that will be part of the discussion. But at least we know that we're not going to waste all this time on something that you all say, hey, we would never approve that. Well, that would have been good to know two months ago.
Right.
Right? And that's what we were talking about for the past couple of years. And so I think we're here now. These, these are basically giving us the guidance to start the process internally to bring forth a recommendation to engage in discussion with the board. That you're ultimately going to have to say yay or nay or uphold these or modify them based upon some of the realities. Because we're not going to be able to vet out every guardrail tonight. You know, it just gives us a starting point.
But if we could vet out, do a scientific method of just having one variable at a time to understand the net impact and then figure out what else we're left with, I, I would appreciate that to have that one variable of class sizes stay the same. Recalculate those numbers and see what we have left to play with. And there may not be a lot left. I, I don't know. I, I have no idea. But if we throw too many variables at that, I think we're going to end up in a mess and.
And that's why we were saying earlier tonight, we're talking like two or three, you know, I think I said three to four. You cannot put so many guardrails on where we're not cutting the budget.
Right.
Right? You'll box ourselves in. And so I, I would rather as a superintendent walk away with and/or continue to have some conversation, I'll still keep that offer out there about some of the iterations that you all come up with tonight. So I kind of know what, what are we starting with initially? I, I, I think I would rather have that. And if we come back to say, you know what, these two guardrails are kind of competing with one another. Or the, or we believe the unintended consequence of this guardrail is so significant that we probably want to brief you in advance before we run down this path. I would just kind of know so that we have the ability to kind of play with this. It's kind of like negotiations. You, you kind of have everything on the table and you kind of figure out, is it all going? Are we going to take pieces of things that we can maybe make it all work together? So that would be my preference.
I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I don't know how to state this. So bear with me. So the fund balance, our policy right now, it, it was stated that if that is to be in our desired outcome to remain in that, in what our, our policy currently is, we would have to make additional cuts to do so. So if, it, it has also been stated tonight that we would, we are possibly looking at statutory operating debt fiscal year 28. If nothing changes.
Right.
Okay. So given that, given, given that reality of what we are looking at, if nothing changes, statutory operating debt in fiscal year 28, we have already come to a consensus that board members would choose to not increase our class size parameters where they're, from where they're currently at. But help me understand what it looks like if we are to keep the, if we are having a, a goal, a budget priority for keeping the policy as it is for our fund balance. Does that move, so will cuts, additional cuts will have to be made, but does that move out or change anything in the, in our, looking forward at statutory operating debt? The, the fund balance, we use it, we have used it the last couple of years to, as, as our savings account, right? We've used it to, to meet the needs of the district. And I'm just curious what it looks like if we're even talking class sizes and keeping the fund balance. If we're looking at those two priorities, what, what kind of situation does that put the district in? Does that make sense? Does that even make sense?
It, it does.
It, it does make sense. And I think those are, those are, that's an example of a potential competing priority.
Yeah.
But we would have to vet through that.
Yeah.
To see, can both hold true? And if, and if so, what sacrifices would be made along the way? Or could, could they even be both held true?
What I'm maybe needing help to understand and Director Ryder or Dr. Thomas, having that fund balance, it's our savings account. It's been our safety cushion. We've used it the last couple of years to meet the needs of the district. We're understanding that if we are to keep that eight percent, we will have to make additional cuts to keep that. But does that save us? And maybe not. I don't know. Cause it's not, I need the gap bridge.
Yeah.
Does that make sense what I'm trying to add?
One of the statements in the memo is the sooner you make adjustments, the better off, right? So you can lower the fund balance policy. That does not necessarily change what you're seeing for the numbers for SOD or, or, or the future, right? That alone doesn't do that. But when, when looking at those numbers and seeing a $4.8 million deficit between revenue and expenditures, if that's all we did, we wouldn't be moving towards keeping at that eight percent. Does that make sense? So we need to be considering that as well. Because we need to make sure that as we progress forward, that the goals of trying to keep enough cash flow to be able to pay the bills and things of that nature as well, you're going to reach a point where that's an absolute. You're going to, you can't go too low, right? At the same time, if revenue continues to be as flat as it's looking, that's our issue. I mean, compared to the expenditures. No, don't get me wrong. As you move through every year, you're going to take a closer look at those expenditures and particularly the 83% that are salaries and benefits and try and nail it down more. Sitting through the insurance committee today, for example, learned a little bit more about what it is that we can anticipate and where we at so far this year with our claims and things of that nature. That gives me a sense of like, where's the right percentage to use in this forecast, right? And as we build next year's budget, how do we fine tune those numbers? Because what I did is simply, it, it's still a pretty broad brush. It wasn't just one percentage across everything, but it still is a broad brush, right? So now it's about us trying to fine tune this a little bit more about, okay, we have some things in the works with regard to negotiations. We know we have everything open next year for everything else. And so it's a question of what are those parameters we're going to set for those? Are the parameters that I've, I've included at this point in time where we're going to land and that's where we're going to stick with it? Or are we going to adjust for that? Because this is intended to give you a sense of what does that number look like? When you put it all together, right? To do some of what you're asking, absolutely, that makes sense. The thing about it is I can't tell you right now about class sizes until we know this answer for boundary changes, right? And there's a process that needs to happen for us to be able to know what that really looks like for each building, how many sections in each building. The specialists are dependent upon the number of sections. It all builds upon itself, right? So there's just so much information that happens in a short period of time. We have to make some assumptions. Some of those assumptions may be wrong in the end and that's where you have these budget to actual variances that occur. But we need to have a plan long range that's going to be kind of thinking about the possibility that, okay, we might dip below that eight percent. What are we going to do then to make sure we, we compensate for that in the future?
And if I may, helping the board understand what is the best case scenario as far as that fund balance goes in and of itself? Because like, I think if I'm just speaking for myself, having that savings account, there is, there is safety in that, right? There is comfort in that. And there, there's also been, at least in my, you know, less than three years on the board, talk about, you know, the, the, our money being used for current, our current money being used for current students.
Students.
And, you know, so being able to weigh those things out, to be responsible, given the circumstances that we're under. Yeah, it's, it's giving us kind of the information that we need. We'll probably have seven different opinions. But like if eight percent is maybe not the, a target that's reasonable or beneficial for our district in this time today, like, I don't know. And those are the kind of things that I would like your help in understanding better, I guess.
And that's why maybe is it worth the exercise for us to be given? Cause I would, I would consider, let's say hypothetically changing the policy and the fund balance from eight to another number, six, whatever it is, I consider that a cut. Cause that is money that we are, we are spending into an account. Is it worth the exercise to, for Lisa and her team to kind of extrapolate? What if, what if we decided to say, okay, we're also going to reduce our fund balance policy to six percent and what that would, what that would mean on a month-to-month, maybe the worst case scenario? Are we going to bump up against that six?
Yeah, I can, I can come back with what it is, like how much is, how much payroll does that cover, right? Because that's kind of what you're watching for. You got to make sure you, you're, you're covering enough to be able to keep things flowing on an, on a short-term basis too. So it's like, that is information that certainly we can recalc because that does shift over time. And so just trying to make sure that that makes sense. And when you're dealing with percentages, math is a funny thing, you know, percentages versus straight dollars. You know, different story depending upon which perspective you're looking at it, right? But yet the same dated.
I was going to say, I believe the original low end of the fund balance was based upon covering us if the state shut down in June. And that would include the forward payments of those that wanted the lump sum, et cetera, because the money wouldn't be coming in and we'd have to cover that.
All the payoffs, yep.
Um, and that's where we base that low bar for the fund balance.
Okay.
But I want to add in something else too, as we're going through this fund balance discussion and class sizes and all that. Because something was brought up last month at our study session, which I've kind of mulled over a little bit. And that's that the one thing that we have to fund. And that is kind of one of our biggest surprises that we've seen with the 1.7 million that we are actually over budget for because of special aid, uh, special ed. And could we actually say our low bar is to increase that estimate by at least a percentage to make sure we're covered for that type of surprise going forward? Like if we say class sizes plus assume a certain percentage extra in, in, in special education?
Yeah.
To avoid that surprise or maybe to at least anticipate it in advance, maybe?
It, it does create a little bit of a, a challenge in the fact that if you over expend in one year, you're going to receive that reimbursement the following year.
Right.
So is it about knowing and understanding that there could potentially be some loss of your fund balance, knowing it's going to get restored the following, but then you can't rely upon it to be able to balance the next year's budget?
Right.
So it's like, you need to be somewhat conservative, which I think I was when you look at the revenues across for state, for state aids. Like, yes, there's a bump for 27 because of what I know is coming here in 26. And it's significant enough because we had kind of a, a unique situation in the fact that our, our special ed transportation costs, as they were recorded in 25, compared to what they will look like in 20, or 24, compared to what they will look like in 26 is much more of a gap than what you'll see in the future. Okay? If that makes sense. We don't anticipate seeing that kind of a increase in our transportation costs as we saw in one year. Does that make sense? And so you would count for that one time, but then moving forward, it wouldn't be as great. So with that, then your special education will take a bump, but you wouldn't anticipate necessarily that that bump would continue every year like that. So you have to kind of moderate that then and bring it back down, which is what I feel I did when taking forward the revenues. So sticking that at a certain point and then staying flat, knowing that there is a chance that that's not going to be the case. Oftentimes what districts will do is we have what we call maintenance of effort for special education. That can mean that you do make adjustments to staffing, but at the same time, you know that there's an increase in costs in other areas related to special education. But in total, you're staying more flat than what you would otherwise do. So it's about analyzing what is your caseloads? What does that look like? What are the real needs of our kids? And trying to understand that, right? And if you have changes in programming and things, what does that do to the cost, right? So with that, it's, it's a lot more complicated than just straight class size formulas, right? As average as those are. When you're dealing with special education, there is still possibilities of finding things that you can adjust, knowing that you're already going to have an embedded increase. And in total, you'll still be meeting your maintenance of effort, right? If your student count's increasing, that's a different story, but I'm talking about assuming your student count wouldn't be increasing, right? That the needs of your students are staying somewhat flat and similar, right? So it's all dependent upon what is our real picture. And that's beyond my, my purview by myself, right? That's a combination of working with Director Chuka and making sure that we're clear and understanding what those needs are. And as we shift the location of those programs, there's, there's those changes too to consider and incorporate into budgets.
The one, if I could just get some clarity too on, on one thing. Director Hackenson, you had mentioned earlier last year, how I think it was in December that we were making some adjustments. And that was based upon the class size targets and what we were forecasting for our enrollment and, and what we would do. That would be the same here too. So when we're talking about class sizes, are, are we talking the class size targets? Because as our enrollment goes down, as long as we're within targets, we can make adjustments. And, and, and so I just want to be clear with the board, that's been something that we've leveraged. La, you know, probably, you know, for as long as I've been here and every district I've been in, you, you look at those targets and it, it's not hard and fast, but we know that we have the target and then we have the discussion cap that we would actually have to talk about, you know, additional FTE. So if our enrollment goes down, then our, our, our targets are staying the same. That's what I'm hearing. Keep classized targets. But we can adjust so long as we don't go above, you know, those targets.
Yeah. So we should reword to say targets.
Class sized targets. Yes.
Okay. I noted that.
Yep.
And again, my concern was that if we have to really, really cut and, and obviously unfortunately staffing is where we cut, then that's where we draw that line. If those class sized targets are going to exceed and then we have to come back.
And we can't do that. Yep. That's where we, that's the ceiling.
Right.
Yep.
So for me, the other kind of non-negotiables I was just thinking about too, as we were, where one came up today as we were talking through the forecast is, should we add something around, and maybe this isn't really non-negotiable, but a, a priority for us to reduce transportation costs and by, by way of RFP, but also finding efficiencies with transportation. I feel like that needs to be a, a priority for us.
And given that would, that's one of our biggest outliers that we know of. And, and so again, I think that's broad enough. So as we look to structure that RFP, it's structured in a way that gets to this priority. So that would be.
Even maybe beyond the RFP, like do we have students that are riding a bus, but they live within, you know, X blocks?
Correct. Just the whole structuring of transportation. But I think that's, and I guess we're saying the same thing. That would all be built into our expectations of how would we choose a provider?
Right.
Based upon those factors that we know are coming with some significant costs. So efficiencies there is something that we want to gain and save dollars.
So we should, should we list that as a board priority to focus on for?
So how, how would you think, how would you word it?
Well, just, I think that falls under maybe optimized resources where we're reducing transportation costs by way of RFP and, you know, finding efficiencies or something like that. We can reword it.
So if you remember last January, we had the transportation policy at the board where we had the option of making it two miles. And then leaving it up to district transportation to determine if we wanted to go under that based upon that. That may be something we want to go back and revisit and turn it back to what, what was recommended by administration at that time. And then I, it may not change the, because we're interested obviously in the safety of the students too. And when you're dealing with, you know, kindergarten through fifth graders, you don't necessarily want. And when you're dealing with, you know, kindergarten through fifth graders, you don't necessarily want them walking, but um, but that may be something we wanna just go back and give the administration that leeway.
And I think you've been.
As I say, Director France, just having kids in the district, I think the key is are we even following our one mile policy? You know, are our kids who are living two blocks from a school, are they receiving transportation? So that, that is to me, that's what, what I'm hearing here is like, why are we these massive increases in transportation costs when we have fewer students in our district? And really going back and forcing our transportation company to take a look at, are we even following, following our current board policies that are currently at hand? Um, so that's, that's my takeaway on that.
And I would add to that too, cause this was a discussion we had around special ed transportation. Having personal experience with that, like I think we can find efficiencies there, right? We don't necessarily need special ed students being on a bus alone. Or maybe could, we could just add paras, you know, depending on needs. So it's part of that, like gaining efficiencies.
Alright, so we need, is there a consensus that we would uh be in favor of a transportation cost decrease? Is that how I'm phrasing it?
I would go to our Director of Operations for that and also to the, obviously a lot of requirements around that and stuff like that. But um seeing where we can cut there, however, I'm not quite sure that's part of one of our red lines. I think that's a consideration for us to go back and maybe adjust the policy to give the administration more flexibility.
Kind of like the fund balance thing, let's explore it.
Sure.
Having.
When you reduce the percentage.
Oh, we didn't land, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I personally am not in favor of reducing fund balance, but I guess I will, you know, I appreciate the feedback on that.
I'm gonna remind you that we did actually just adjust, adjust this policy. It used to be twelve percent unassigned and assigned. So I am not supportive of adjusting our fund balance policy. Um, that is our savings account and I, we have little the way of it from, you go back and look at when I started on the board on twenty two. In twenty three, we made some very serious investments in our district that I did not support. Um, and I, I don't wanna go down that path, but we have little the way our fund balance in the last few years. And so I do not support going below where we're at currently. And we've already done that multiple times in our district.
Ben misspoke in that I would like to see a, a picture of what that would look like, just so we're confident that, that eight percent in our current reality isn't too mu- isn't too much. Maybe it's seven, maybe, I mean, if it's seven and a half, it would save us.
According to the projection, we'll be under that next year anyways.
Right.
So, and I think the, and I think the, the, the discussion, yeah. And then the next year, we're really, we're in debt, we're underwater, we have no money left whatsoever and we're actually borrowing and, and SOD. But I do have a question, cause we don't really have anything in our policies right now about what we do when we're under. It would, no matter what we set it at, we set it there, but we don't have any board action as a result of when it actually does drop below that. And I think that's also a question that maybe we should consider.
We do actually have that in policy, Director France. It's in seven oh one one two, I believe, or something like that. It says that it has to come before the board for discussion. And I've, I've called, I've called that out a couple of times in our meetings, so um I, I do believe that is in policy. So I think formalizing that, I agree with you, formalizing that. Um, and what happens, I, I don't disagree with you, cause that hasn't happened, um, but it is written in policy.
No, we, we all agree it's written in policy. The thing is, is the discussion is very nebulous and we are at a point where it will drop in the next twelve months.
So then what?
So what, what do we do then and what is our, what are the boundaries for those discussions? And what choices do we actually have or what should we be doing with that? Because again, it's a, it's un, it's unchartered water here.
So my other non-negotiable for me, um, I, I liked the um gifted and talented in leaving those in there, especially um, you know, I think we're already moving Sage into different programming. And I just, again, going back to our strategic plan and empowering each student to reach their full potential, I think it's really important to make sure that we state like that's kind of a last resort to, to cut any gifted and talented programming that we have.
Maintain current.
What we have, or I don't even know what we're calling it these days, yes. I don't know if others agree, but for me, I feel like that's part of our strategic.
Is there consensus to uh keep current, ma- maintain the current level of gifted and talented programming?
No.
No.
No, that's um unfortunately, um, unfortunately, that is um um, an area that is a very much a nice to have. And um, you know, there's, there's a lot of reasons why we talked about cutting it last year. Um, it's an expensive program and um I, I think that it's, it's, I think that that's going a little too high for the red line.
Well, let me rephrase it then, because uh when we decided to make the changes in Sage, um, Dr. Thomas, if I remember right, um, you were gonna kind of reorganize the whole way that that program operates.
And supporting kids in their homes.
And, and I'm not saying that we should hang on to what we have currently. I'm saying continue to move ahead with Michael's plan for that group of students that he was gonna put in place in lieu of Sage, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Am I remembering that right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at, not, not that we go back and, and redo what, what we cut last year more. It's more about maintaining, continuing, having Michael continue down the road of, of, of redoing that program.
And ensuring that we maintain a gifted and talented program, period, is that correct?
What we have with this new whatever.
With, with the new. With supporting kids who are eligible or qualified within their homeschools and, and the model will look different based upon our resources to be able to do it, but yeah.
Ensuring that we have one.
I would just add, I think that meets our strategic plan, like right? Like helping children reach their full potential, um, if every student, so I, I, I think that aligns with our strategic plan as well.
So it looks, we have three S's, uh, Director Alstead and Director.
I need to qualify though.
You qualify.
So uh, we used to have that pullout program, um, like where kids that were, that had um, um, needs, whether they be for um, you know, advanced needs or not. And we used to have the student support services that could come and work with those, those students to give them extra challenging work, et cetera, um, I believe. And I, and I, and, and that, it was synergy at one point in time, then we had a program before that.
The iteration of that is what we're, that we believe we could have some capacity to support. And that's what we're starting this year with that kind of at-large third grade differentiation support.
And the differentiation support, I fully support. What I don't support is the, because one of the reasons why we had some issues was the integrity of the original gifted and talented program and that it wasn't being supported and that we did have policies where um, that were not, that were um, we were supporting kids um for whatever reason, that we had to lower basically the threshold in order to even keep the program going. So, you know, if we're supporting differentiation, absolutely. But I'd like to keep it in that language and not in a GNT because that gives it a whole nother connotation. And also um, the one thing that I wanna, that I wanna know is there are funds from the state if there is that particular designation. If we change the designation and not have a formal set aside program and leave it at differentiated services, which I think are needed no matter what, um, does that at all put our, our funding in jeopardy?
No, it is a formula based upon the gen ed formula, a portion of it that a certain number of dollars that they say per student um goes towards gifted and talented. So what you find yourself doing is considering um, how does that program function? Are there individuals or portions of their time that is spent specifically on that type of programming? And that's where you would find yourself probably allocating a portion of salaries to that or certain grade levels and what they're, you know, whatever that model might look like is how you're gonna probably show those expenditures, right? If you didn't show those expenditures in that fashion, then you'd find yourself growing a reserve that you're not spending. And the fact of the matter is um, one of the things you want to do and that our policy does call for is to use those reserve funds first before you use the un, unis- um, the unassigned. So the fact is if you have specific dollars for a particular purpose and you are spending it towards that purpose, we wanna make sure we're coding those things there, right?
So um, to qualify differentiation, yes, that, that has to be done no matter what. I am, at, at this point, I am not in favor of going into additional funds that are not being supported by the state based upon our numbers and our, and the money that we would be getting toward to funding that program. And that would be my concern. And I have nothing against the program, I'm just saying that now we're, we're literally at the point where we're cutting off limbs. And, and we need to draw the line there because otherwise we could be going into funds that we simply don't have. And again, the staffing is a huge expense. And if we're going to keep class sizes the same, I, I would have a hard time financially looking at those numbers and balancing them out.
So we have, are we, are we clear on what we're asking, just for?
Just the differentiated.
And so we have a yes and a no, any yes?
I'm yes if it's differentiation.
Okay.
I'm yes if it's that and we're not overspending.
I think that's really important here is that we're all clear on what we're stating. And because it's been stated here tonight, the gifted, you know, are we in support of gifted and talented? Or are we in support of differentiation? If we're talking differentiation based upon what we learned as um decisions were made to get to where we are today, then yes, I am in support of the differentiation support. The gifted and talented programs, we already decided that they are not looking as they used to look. So um, you know, making sure that we're clear on that. I, I do support that the, the students that are um needing the differentiation support, that we continue to do what we said that there was margin to do.
But would you like us to call that in this document, Dr. Thomas, like differentiated support?
I think that differentiated support is.
Just make sure it's clear, yeah.
Alright, um, may I suggest we have um given him, Dr. Thomas, three things so far to consider. Would I be out of line to then allow us to use his invitation to have further conversation, which would then um uh roll out in, at the end of November where we'll um give the, the final red lines and guardrails so that they can get on with the process? Is that fair?
This really gets us going.
Director Atkinson, is that fair?
Yeah, I just, one thing I wanna just, uh, I just wanna go back to, I, I, I don't wanna elaborate on this, but I do remember our conversations back in like March and April when we talked about administrative cuts. And one of the things we talked about is what do all the administrative positions do? And are we able to get that information? I thought we had more in alignment on that, that went into our next budget session, that we would be able to get that information as far as like what do the administrative positions all do? So that we can um basically understand, like are we making administrative cuts? Or like if we're not touching classrooms, then it really, it becomes people, right? And it becomes, in my opinion, it becomes more administrative or student supports or whatever that means. So I just wanted to ask that question as we're going into this budget session. Dr. Thomas, you probably remember the conversation when we talked, I know that Dan White, Director White, you had actually recommended that we have more of a descriptive analysis of that. Um, I just wanted to understand that, so.
We did get it. It was, we got an extremely granular detailed breakdown of that um, that Director Frederickson gave to us of every single role and every single title and how they were broken down. And I believe that was given last May or June? Maybe, maybe, yeah, no, maybe, maybe longer than that.
I remember exactly where I was sitting, I remember exactly when we talked about it, so.
I do recall a discussion around doing some org review as far as like we would call in the corporate world, like spans and layers.
We have two.
Where we do like a kind of a rule based, like, you know, if you have X students, you would expect one dean per X students or one, you know, that kind of org review. We had some discussion around that.
We had one when we were sitting at the table over there that was very, very detailed. And then we had another one that was a higher level because there was a lot of confusion about people using that STAR report that wasn't made for administration.
Yeah, that, that doesn't do it.
Maybe we can use that opportunity for the one-on-ones to um, to broach that subject if that's, that's important. Cause I'd like to, to uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanna say, whoa. Um, I wanna say that was in um, when we were talking, cause yeah, I remember where I was sitting too, we were over there.
We were over there.
And it was in um, just for everybody's benefit, the month isn't gonna help you, but uh, cause I can't remember that. But it was in a presentation that she gave and I think it was when we were talking about, you know, some of the cuts and things like that. I remember it was like a huge grid and everything was laid out.
Yeah, Director Herman.
Director Herman walked through the distinctions of the categorization of, of, of the administrative FTE.
Correct.
And how on the STAR report, yeah, I, I, that's, I won't rehash that right now, but, but.
So that information is available if, if, if a member wants to broach that, which with, with Dr. Thomas. So if we're good with our starting point, um, I think we've given the administration a good place to start and.
Thank you for the perspectives and uh your open dialogue here tonight.
Would you like me to update draft and send it out? We can circulate it again, just to have the document for, like a final with the three that we just.
That'd be great, sure, thank you.
The, the thing that we have here, the one that.
Yeah, just update the same format we've been using, right, yeah, yeah.
Um, next to the agenda is the handbook. And before we start discussion, which I'm not opposed to having, um, it has been suggested to me that as, as I'm sure you all know, it's, it's rather lengthy and there are a lot of words. And uh, um, I'm wondering if, uh, I'm just gonna throw this out to the six of you who will still be here uh when the clock turns twenty twenty-six. Um, it's been suggested that perhaps this finalization of the, uh, and the wordsmithing of the handbook uh might deserve its own space. And I'm wondering if, and I'm not trying to throw this off anybody else, but I, I want to be respectful cause Charles put a lot of work into this and I want what's agreed upon um and, and put into place and voted on to be something that, that the board at the time has had a proper amount of input and we're not just trying to jam it through. I'm not so concerned about the timing as I am the integrity of the document. And um, I'm wondering if, if, if it's the will of you, of the six of you, um, if I, I would even make a, you know, ahead of time, make a, a, a date for a retreat for the new board in twenty-six with this is the topic, is that completely out of line?
Uh, Chair White, if I may, um. Director Cothorn, you uh sent an email to the Policy Advisory Committee regarding doing work outside, collaborating. I'm wondering if, if you could, what I'm thinking of is that maybe this direction that he gave um with doing policy advisory work, that uh, um, uh, a Google Doc is shared amongst the policy committee, um, a space for people to uh write their comments and things so that every, you know, so it's all gathered. I think that, that might be really helpful for us in this space. While Director Johnson, your um, I too am so appreciative of what bringing their current policies in and all the work that you've done, um, but to s- or I shouldn't say but, and to save um space and to for, to get all, to collect all the feedback from all the different board members, um, doing something like you're suggesting in the Policy Advisory Committee really could help us.
I like that idea, putting it out there instead of having everyone send in feedback and having somebody trying to read and, and kind of coagulate everything.
It's a discussion at, in this space, whether it be at a regular session or a study session, it becomes cumbersome.
Right.
Um, and so if we have a, have time and space for us all to um give our feedback and then um, then it would be figuring out how as a board, we wanna um, you know, bring those into a, you know, bring those suggestions together. And, and I think getting the board's feedback on how to do that collectively, I think that'll help us. I think everyone will feel like they're heard, their suggestions are seen and it gives us time. Um, while I think Director Johnson did a fantastic job um to getting us to where we are right now. Um, I am not opposed with what you're suggesting, Chair White, in um, you know, giving this, giving us time. And then in the beginning of the year, um, having a specific, whether we do a board retreat or not, whether.
But a specific space.
Yeah, a specific space. And maybe we can get it done um, may, with a, another.
Yeah, a specific space. And maybe we can get it done with a, another study session and then vote on it. I'm not sure. You know, I, I like the idea of a retreat because obviously with the finance issues, we have other things coming up that will, you know, like the, a lot of changes in our district and using the time with the administration here and the public and all that to focus that on actual district work and then to focus the work on ourselves. At a retreat, combined with the idea that you just said about having these documents be in a Google Doc that people can actually see and contribute to and see other people's contributions, so there isn't a lot of duplication.
My only feedback to that is, one, I think just like the two hundred series policies, we could probably chop away at this in a couple different board meetings and get it done. And have it done by the end of the year, so that's my personal feedback. But I also know I've heard a lot of criticism in our community that there are no board violation policies in place. So board members are not really held accountable for their actions. And I, I just think, you know, we have procedures in here that need to be followed if board members are not following code of ethics. And so I think that pushing this off kind of sends a bad message to our community that we're not holding each other accountable. But yet there are things in this board handbook that we still, still should be following, you know what I mean? Even though it hasn't been finalized or mode development, we still have code of ethics policies that we need to follow in board. So I just wanted to put that out there. We're not trying to pass the buck. We're not trying to pull, you know, push something off. I really appreciate the Google Doc. I appreciate your collaborative approach. I, I pushed for that from the beginning, so I'm appreciating that. But on the flip side of it, I think taking a couple meetings and we'd be able to get this done. So I kind of have two different thoughts on that, so.
Thank you. So what's the consensus? I, my, my other thought was, would be a very good way to onboard, you know, either Dustin or John with this as a topic to really have them dig in right away on, on how, how we're supposed to operate and all those different things. So I think that, that part too would be helpful. But having said that, I like the Google Doc idea as well. How do we want to handle that? Before I push this off on somebody else.
If I were to give a suggestion, it would be start. My personal suggestion would be that we start with a Google Doc. And even if we state that in the November study session, look at where we're at, right? Like, look at where we're at collectively as a board, you know, the, the.
Maybe there's enough similarity that we could.
Yeah, maybe. We only have one study session left.
One more left, yeah. And then we have some, that's going to be pretty much budget.
And I, and I think that, you know.
But that's fair enough, I mean.
I think it's fair because it kind of addresses, you know, both thoughts that Director Atkinson shared, you know. I think, you know, the two hundreds took us longer than we thought they would. This, this work, it's important work. And I think if we, if we just start with the, the Google Doc and where everyone has their space to contribute. And then during the November study session, we can look at where we're at. And then we can decide as a board where, you know, will we do a board retreat come, come January? I think, I think giving us that leeway is, is helpful, at least for me.
Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Um, yeah, and I actually heard, already sent some track changes. I do think there's a bunch of like just formatting kind of stuff and whatever.
A lot of the stuff is going to be, I think Martha's going to be cleaning up. Once we have the, everything finished, then it'll show make it look the way it's supposed to look.
Yeah.
Yeah, but my only other comment would be like, it would be nice to have in place before a new board member joins because it is a useful tool. But I don't know if we would be able to get it done by January, so with the holidays.
I like Director Bullion's suggestion, let's see where we are in November and give everybody a chance to, to weigh in. And if we find that we're real close, maybe we can, we can do it.
Yeah. Then we can say, we can give a present.
Yeah. All right.
Did Director Olsted's?
Thank you.
Director Olsted, do you have anything?
That sounds good.
All right, we will move on to our final item, which is the first reading of policy seven twenty-two.
Yes, thank you. This will be very brief. So as the, from the policy committee, seven twenty-two is a yearly reviewed policy. So we reviewed it in our policy committee. And since it was very thoroughly vetted last year and made some changes last year, the committee did not see actually any changes. The only changes are at the very bottom would be to replace Director Herman's name with my name and change her email to my email. So those are the changes that you are seeing on the policy.
All right, thank you. Comments or questions? Director Atkinson.
Yeah, I have a question for Director Rob. In the MSBA policy, there's something that very specifically says that was changed in the twenty twenty-five Minnesota legislative session. That has to do, I'm going to call it bullet point, I don't know how to define it, but it's under request for public data. So it's C, it's, it's an individual bullet point. If we don't include that in our policy, so if we updated this to reflect legislative changes and we didn't include this one paragraph, I could definitely read it, but you may be already aware of it. But it has to do with if the school district notifies the requesting person that responsive data for copies are available for inspection or collection. And the requesting person does not inspect the data or collect the copies within five business days of notification. The school district may suspend any further response to the quest until the requesting person inspects the data that has been made available or collects the piece with the copies that have been produced. And it says that that's part of Minnesota, twenty twenty-five Minnesota legislative session, and that is not included in our policy.
Yeah, I, we, I mean, from, went to the MSBA website and on, under seven twenty-two pulled up the most recent red line version that MSBA had. And that, you know, from our committee standpoint, did not see any updates from that policy version or any new from where it listed twenty twenty-five. So, I mean, if there is, we can definitely go back to the policy committee and relook at MSBA's. But when we pulled the MSBA red line, there was nothing that had been updated since the last policy committee update had brought it. MSBA was still after, after that, or before that date.
Is that?
John, I didn't, I didn't find it in the red line. I just found it in their policy. Like I literally took our policy and their policy and compared it, and this was the only thing that was different. So I'm, I'm happy I can email you a copy of it. I don't think it needs to go back to policy committee, to be honest with you. I'm just wondering if it's part of Minnesota State statute, why it's not included in ours?
Is it reflected in the current statutes that are here? Because a lot of times the statute numbers don't change. But it, it's, it was my understanding that the statutes didn't, the statute numbers did not get updated at all. If they made any minor adjustments within any of the statutes, these statute numbers are still legal references that would apply regardless.
Well, I think that's fact, but I think this change is kind of a big change because it basically says that somebody has to go look at their data within five days, so.
That was in there.
Our policy shows ten days right now.
I think we have under, under that section, Director Atkinson, number four, under B. And then under one, and under baby C. Thing though, but.
I, I just want to be clear, our policy matches MSBA word for word except for they have an informal paragraph that has to do with a Minnesota legislative change from twenty twenty-five. It's not listed in our policy.
But what I'm saying is, does this baby C say the same thing? With exception of that yours has five and this has ten days.
Director Olsted, because they have that and then they also have this other paragraph. I understand what you're saying. I understand. I looked at it word for word and they have this extra paragraph. So I just want to be careful that we are including everything that is included regarding the statute. And this is very statutory, heavily, heavy from policy. You can pull up MSBA and look at it. Perhaps you can circle that as our working day, you can take a look at it. I'm not trying to run it too off, but.
All right, appreciate it.
So that's what it was. So it's in there.
No, this is MSBA's.
So we didn't include, so we didn't, so they have a note in there talking about the twenty twenty-five. They don't make a change to the actual body of the document.
It's not in paragraph C. It does not have paragraph C in our policy.
Okay, I think we found it.
Right, but is that in here?
That's not in ours.
It's not in ours, okay.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I'm sorry. Just point of clarification, so this is, this is a new version or a new paragraph on MSBA's policy seven twenty-two. Without bringing it back to policy committee, would the board be okay if this were to be added to reflect MSBA without going back to policy committee for a discussion?
I see, I see.
Yes.
Yeah, because it's statute driven.
Okay.
I don't use it because it's statutory and determined, so I'm totally fine with that.
All right, we good?
And no changes to the statutes at the bottom.
Yes.
Yeah, the reference is already there. So, yeah, so adding that would just be basically doing what was already there. But the statutes don't change, but I don't care either way. We're the same. It's.
Yep, everything else is the same.
Everything else is the same. The statute, the statutory reference is in there.
All right, great, thank you. I think we are done for the evening.
Thank you.